All right, today is October 5th, 2021, and I'm going to call the meeting of the City of San Clemente City Council to order. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Duncan.
You're here.
Councilmember Noblock. Mayor Pro Tem James.
Here.
Mayor Ward.
Present.
And Councilmember Ferguson is absent.
Do we have any public comments for closed session?
I have one from anonymous.
Okay.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I am here to let the public know that I am serving the following individuals. City Manager Eric Send. Kathleen Ward, Councilmember. Jean James, Councilmember. And the City of San Clemente, which I will be handing to Ms. Joanne Bade, the City Clerk.
Have you arranged to hand that out?
Do I need to arrange to hand it out?
City Attorney, would you advise, please?
The, well, A, this is not on the agenda, B.
It's under anticipated litigation, item B.
No, that's not what this is about.
It should have been listed then on the agenda as to what the anticipated litigation is.
No, it didn't need to be, but anyway, with all that said, the City Clerk's agent for service on all the people you named, so you could just hand it over.
Okay, and I would like to see her hand deliver them to all two of you.
That's, that'll be up to her in normal course. She's there, thank you.
Okay, so pending that, is there an agenda, a motion to go into closed session?
Close session.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem. I'll second that motion. Okay, seconded by Councilmember Noblock.
Okay, and that's to recess to closed session. Councilmember Duncan.
Hi.
Councilmember Noblock. Mayor Pro Tem James.
Hi.
And Mayor Ward.
Hi.
Carrie Spurrow.
Thank you.
We're waiting for Chris.
Mr. Brow, can you please start the meeting? Are we live? All right. So I'm going to call this business meeting to order, Madam Court.
Yes, Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Nobla.
Here.
Mayor Potem James.
Here.
And Mayor Ward.
Here.
First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Duncan.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
First item under Special Presentation is an update on the homeless issue, October Report. And I do have one speaker card.
Okay, let's hear from the speaker first before staff talks.
Donna Vardre.
Donna, before you start, that microphone is adjustable. Can you adjust it before you speak and then we'll start your time? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Cold and rainy last night, pretty miserable if you were without shelter in San Clemente. I will continue to advocate for San Clemente to work with county and state elected officials to provide shelter and shelter options to those sleeping in the elements on our San Clemente streets and public spaces. Safe parking for people living and sleeping in their cars. A place to go to the bathroom, meet toileting and hygiene needs of our San Clemente homeless population. When we act generously, extending a welcome hand, offering food, clothing the homeless, advocating for justice, our lives are filled with justice and a higher presence and service for others. All of the world's great religions teach us this. San Juan Capistrano city leaders entered into a partnership with Jamboree Housing to explore development of 50 permanent supportive housing units that can be added to the City Hall property. This was rezoned in 2016 after the property was identified as a spot where affordable housing could be built. This would include permanent housing for people who were previously homeless or at risk for being unhoused. And come with around the clock services provided through Jamboree and onsite county social services. San Juan Capistrano city leaders are taking proactive measures to help solve the affordable housing and permanent supportive housing needs in their city. I look to our city council and city leadership to communicate a strategy and action plan for our city's homeless population. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's our staff member for that update? Mr. Tamian.
Council, yes, Mayor, members of the City Council, Adam Tamian, Deputy Community Development Director. I have a quick update for you tonight. The first item is in regards to the City Outreach and Engagement Report. We have posted June, July, and August. September's report will be published by the end of this week on the City's Homeless Resources webpage. If IT would mind putting up that page on screen share. There have, in response to some council requests, we have provided additional information. And that's perfect. Thank you. Under, in the first section under Individuals Assisted, we have included some information related to the reported causes of people's situations. Those being economic conditions, substance abuse, mental health issues, a combination between substance abuse and mental health issues, and then another category that also includes if no causes are reported. And if you can take that down, that's what I wanted to show for now. These, as I mentioned, these reports are on the city's website. I'm more than happy to answer any specific questions about the report. One of the, one of the latest developments, as I reported at the last meeting, was our HMIS inclusion into the county's coordinated entry system. Carly Hunter, our community outreach worker, has been actively engaged in the meetings related to coordinating people's entry into the service, the services provided through the county and through nonprofit agencies, organizations, and attending those meetings where they are looking to match providers to people that are in need of services. And then additionally, at the last, or I should say at the first Human Affairs Committee meeting with the new Human Affairs Committee, Carly was introduced at that meeting and that, that the question and answer portion of that meeting went on for quite a while. So it is clear that the Human Affairs Committee is poised and ready to take on the issues of homelessness where the Joint Homeless Subcommittee has left off. So staff will continue to work with that group to ensure that they have all the information that they need to carry on those efforts. That, that sums up my report, and if there are any questions, I'm more than happy to answer at this time.
All right, go ahead, Mayor Potem.
Adam, the second outreach coordinator, when do we anticipate that's going to occur?
That, the, the concept for a second outreach person is, is being discussed in terms of, of the, the funding available for that. I don't, I don't believe that there's an actual start date. I don't think that that position has been, has been officially approved. I think that's just something the Human Affairs Committee was presented with as an opportunity of how to spend some of our, our, the city's funds.
So that's not a done deal, the second outreach person? I see someone wants to talk here.
I'll be happy to.
Thanks.
Cecilia Gallardo-Daly, Community Development Director. The discussion by the Human Affairs Committee about the possibility of funding a second full-time community outreach worker came as part of a recommendation for how to use some state funds that the city is eligible for. It's part of It's part of Senate Bill Two, the permanent housing local allocation. And we did get a recommendation from the Human Affairs Committee on how to utilize those funds. We'll be bringing that recommendation to the council, I believe in October, so next
Previous Human Affairs?
No, this current Human Affairs Committee, yeah, at their meeting last month. So we'll be bringing that request to the council next month. And once we receive the council's recommendation, we'll apply for the grant monies, but the council will be able to weigh in on those funding considerations.
And then do we anticipate we would get double bang for our buck here? You know, I know the current resource is stretched. If we're looking at second resource, are we looking at that second resource being part time, full time? What are you looking at?
We, we are looking at another full-time community outreach worker that can provide some additional assistance in the field, but also provide some administrative support to be able to enter in all of that information into that HMIS database and do all the follow-up information that's necessary to track and ensure that the individuals are receiving the best care with the best available resources.
Very good. Thank you. And my, my second and final question is, the human, not the Human Affairs Committee, but yeah, the Human Affairs Committee, as part of their work plan, would you anticipate homelessness being what percentage, 50%, 25% versus the balance of their work plan?
You know, that is under discussion. The Human Affairs Committee started discussing their work program at their last meeting last month. They'll be holding a meeting again next week where they'll continue to talk about it. So we'll know more in the coming weeks.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
All right. I don't see, do you have any comment, question?
Nope.
All right. So thank you, Adam, for that update. Appreciate it.
Next item is a presentation by Councilmember Duncan to Angelo Vedrine Carney for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout.
So why, why don't you come up to the podium, Angelo? Warren, you can come here if you want. But yeah, I'm gonna make this presentation on behalf of Mayor Ward, and then I'll, I'll go ahead and read our commendation, and then I'll, I'll come up and present it, okay? All right. So this is on behalf of the city of San Clemente. Whereas the Eagle Scout Award is the highest designation offered by the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas only 2% of Boy Scouts nationwide ever attain the rank of Eagle Scout due to the necessities to complete 21 merit badges, Angelo got 25, perform in the leadership role and complete a community service project. And whereas the Eagle Scout Challenge includes living with honor, displaying loyalty, demonstrating courage, being cheerful, and extending a helping hand through service. And whereas during his tenure as a Boy Scout, Angelo Vedrine Carney, San Clemente resident and member of Troop 724, exemplified the high standards and principles that are promoted by the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Angelo's community service project involved designing and constructing a meditation garden at his church, Christ Lutheran, as requested by the pastor and church membership. And whereas, the city of San Clemente is grateful to Angelo for completing an outstanding public service project and desires to congratulate him on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Now therefore, I, Kathy Ward, acting on behalf of the city council and the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby commend Angelo Vedrine Carney for demonstrating exceptional perseverance and determination that has enabled him to achieve the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout.
Chris, would Angelo like to say something?
Never worked one, never worked with one of these before. Thank you. Hear me now? Again, okay. Thank you so much for allowing me to come here and be here for this meeting, and thank you so much for this. I'm sure I will be able to use it in college applications and for interviews and stuff like that. I've worked very hard for a very long time, and while it hasn't been fun the entire time, I enjoy it, and I learned a lot of lessons through that that I will use for the rest of my lifetime. And it was rough at some points, it's a very long journey. It was very fun, and I made a lot of friends and connections that I will use for the rest of my life. Thank you.
Terrific.
Congratulations.
Next is a presentation of a proclamation to Elizabeth Andrade, CEO of Family Assistance Ministries, declaring October 17th as the day set apart for the 34th Annual Hunger Walk.
Okay, I, I see Elizabeth on, online. I'm gonna be making this presentation. A lot of people know that FAM every single year does a Hunger Walk that is, you know, is sponsored, and it's one of the major fundraisers for FAM. So I'm going to be presenting this Sunday at the Hunger Walk, but we wanted to do it tonight so that the residents and all the public could understand that this is happening this weekend, and they, they actually could still participate. So Elizabeth, I would like to present this proclamation to you. Family Assistance Ministry was funded in 1999 as a charitable nonprofit organization that assists individuals, families, seniors, and veterans who are hungry, homeless, or at risk of becoming homeless, helping them create a workable solution to their particular challenges through meeting their immediate needs with a solid plan working towards a housed and stable future. And whereas FAM has served more than 120,000 neighbors in need since its inception in 1999, and has distributed over $354,000 in cash aid in the form of vouchers and bills paid. And whereas FAM serves as the hub for social services in our community, bringing together local churches, schools, businesses, civic organizations, the city of San Clemente, and hundreds of caring citizens to prevent duplication of services. And whereas through Gilchrist House, FAM's interim transitional shelter for homeless women and homeless women with children, over 900 women and children have been sheltered since 2003. And FAM partners with 400 community and industry partner organizations and over 1,200 annual volunteers to get the job done, to include case management, job search, income tax preparation, clothing, counseling, events, and more as needs dictate. And whereas, Family Assistance Ministry will host its 34th Annual Hunger Walk on October 17th, 2021, in San Clemente, and the proceeds will benefit individuals and families in crisis in South Orange County. Now I therefore, Kathy Ward, Mayor of the city of San Clemente, acting on behalf of the city council and the citizens of San Clemente, to hereby proclaim Sunday, October 17th, 2021, as the day set apart for the FAM Hunger Walk. And by doing so, I urge the citizens of our community to lend their support to this worthy cause. So I, if you would like to make any comments and announcements, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor Ward and city council members and the city staff. We could not do what we do without your support and your continued care for the community members in need. And as Mayor Ward outlined, we will be hosting the 34th Annual FAM Hunger Walk on Sunday, October 17th. Registration starts at 1 o'clock. We will start walking at 2 o'clock out of the community center and ending at the, at the pier. So we welcome all support. We are eager to see the community outreach through this event. And as it was founded 34 years ago by the late Reverend James King, it does bring awareness and resources to those most in need in our community, and for that, we honor him. We thank the support of the city staff and the city council and you, Mayor Ward, for your ongoing support of FAM, and we look forward to having you join us on Sunday, October 17th.
Thank you. I will see you then, and I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, I'll be there too. And it, everybody should, should join if they can. It's a downhill walk. Don't forget.
Right. Thank you.
Until you walk back.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the city of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. Speakers may address council once during either Oral Communications Part One or Part Two. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for Oral Communications Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes in which to give his or her presentation. And I do have some cards. The first is from Amanda Kitnia, and she will be followed by Martina, and then Rick Lefler.
I'm not even in the screen, am I? No, Amanda, you're on.
Oh, there I am. Good evening, council members. I'm speaking today in opposition of Amazon in our town. According to the status, the status of the application, it's pending on the city webpage. However, from the project manager, Stephanie Rock says she mentioned in an email that NV5, the traffic engineering firm, is amending their traffic study. Also, an environmental study report will have to be done. If the traffic study and the EIR would be in place, this matter would be going to the Planning Commission. So our, so the public would have a limited time to basically oppose anything in that just traffic study or in the environmental study. I'm opposed to the massive 105,000 square foot building. The effects are detrimental to the environmental, to the environment or health and our well-being. And it will create traffic that may trigger the TCA and bring them back toll roads such as Alternative 14 that had a bridge overpass to, onto Del Cero. The impacts on the environment are significant. It will raise the heat index and threaten preservation of our open spaces. It would destroy our natural habitat, habitat of protective flora and fauna and the natural topography. The effect of traffic of hundreds of semi-trailers, delivery trucks, and other vehicles will definitely impact, introduce volatile organic compounds, reactive organic compounds, carbon oxide, diesel particulate matter, nitrites oxide, methane gas, and other toxic vehicular emissions 24/7. So I strongly, when this comes, if this comes, if Amazon comes to our city council, I urge you to vote no. And we're not going away. We are gonna be coming, you know, at every city council meeting and to state our position. Thank you very much.
Martina?
Who's after Martina?
After Martina would be Rick Lefler.
Okay.
Good evening, council. My name is Martina. I've been active in the San Clemente community and at city council for quite a while now. And I worked on several campaigns. I worked for Laurel Ferguson's campaign. I worked for Jean James's campaign in 2018, 19, and on Dan Vane's campaign. And I'm talking tonight something about called truth, perception, and transgression. And I was looking back on old memories, and I remember the first time I saw Mayor Protem speak at this diocese, and it was in 2016. And he talked about the issue of living next to a sober living home, and, you know, it was very moving. And then I looked back, and I remember a post that he made in 2019, and this is what he said in his post. "I've had drug rehab house next to me is not hateful, but intolerant. Let me start by the admitting intolerance." And he goes on to list some issues that he had living there. It gets a little more concerning when he says, "The HOA board was completely useless and flawless. They refused to help. I consider them complicit and beneath contempt." And I believe that this is the same HOA that he was accused of brandishing a weapon at. "I represent the city issued to Doncheck, Brown, Ward, and they just gave me blank, blindness, blank stares. It seems to be their comfort zone. And Baker and Ham were talking when I began, and when I called them out, then Baker scoffed at me, and his stage was for him. This should be good upon where they both laughed. I still want to punch Ham and Baker in the face. Of course I will not, but I'll have to suppress that thought whenever I see them. I consider this council to be complacent in their explosion of drug rehab houses in San Clemente. For those that have positive opinions on these council members, personally, I beg to deliver. When I relive that moment at council, it just reinforces how truly worthless they are as individuals and collectively as a council. For that matter, it reveals who they are as humans. Additionally, I wonder, are they benefiting from these drug rehab houses in San Clemente? I could go on, being intolerant. Is that hateful? Looking at that smug SOB and the pic and wanting to punch them, is that hateful? Okay, maybe it is. However, my righteous intolerance ran their sorry asses off my street. No thanks to our externally worth as city council members. Looking at this post is reliving this hell once more. They left more than a year ago, and I'm still emotional, and frankly, I'll always be livid." Then I looked back at the actual meeting, and this is how it went.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, good evening. My name is Jean James. I'm probably the newest resident of San Clemente, so I haven't voted for any of you yet.
All right, thank you very much. Rick Lefler, after Mr. Lefler, who's next? To, next Shelley Moore, and after Shelley Moore?
That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna change the mood just a little bit. Is there any way you could turn this disco ball on? I've wanted to have this on ever since you've had the meeting here. Really add to my, my, my first comment here is, as a board member on the Friends of San Clemente, I want to remind everybody that our, our carnival is the weekend after this coming weekend. That's our two major fundraisers of the golf tournament, what we already had, which was a big success, and then there's the carnival. So tickets are online, and I want everybody to come on, have some mirth and merriment at the San Clemente Carnival at the sports park. Yay. Okay, and the other thing I wanted to mention real quick also is on the housing situation, portable housing in San Clemente, a couple of things have come up. I know a couple of meetings ago, you were discussing the numbers, you know, the state mandated numbers on affordable housing and percentages. And at that time, staff didn't let the council know what those numbers were or the option that we had to even appeal those numbers. I know Councilman Noblock mentioned that, and he was concerned. With things that are coming up now, I, I know a lot of my, my friends are talking about ADUs in the city, and there's a lot of people, including Talega residents, that seem to think that HOAs are exempt from ADUs and the, and the two duplexes on a lot. And I think a bill just got signed that actually said that, that they're not. HOAs are subject to the exact same, same rules on the ADUs and the duplexes. So I would encourage the council to make sure that staff is really, really up on all the significant portions of what's coming forward here. It's very complicated. There's no reason to think that our staff or anybody else are experts in this because it's brand new, but it's really gonna be whoofus to really get some expert input to where we start looking at these numbers and how we achieve them, which we will have to do as a city, how we can best do that. So that's it. Disco ball.
Ms. Moore? And she, she will be followed by BRM.
Which we know isn't on the agenda, but after spending the last couple of weeks living in RSC and the non-stop roadwork that's been going on, I'm sure you all know, it's paving, it's one HOA is completely putting in new streets. It's work done from the sinkhole, the non-stop beeping trucks, the non-stop squealing brakes. I just can't even imagine what it's gonna be like when Amazon's here. I mean, this has been going on for weeks. Can't work out of home anymore. I'd have to go somewhere else to work. It's just non-stop, and this is what we're gonna see with Amazon. If the sound carries, when Lifetime is being built, we could hear everything that was happening, and I'm at the top of the hill. So I just wanted to say, please think about Amazon, because this is just gonna make our life a living hell. Thank you.
Hello, council. Brad Malamed. It's good to be back in San Clemente. I think this is one of the great cities of our country, and, and I hope it even gets better as time goes on. I want to be quick tonight. I just want to ask the council to move up item 9D, because I think there's I just want to ask the council to move up item nine D, because I think there's an awful lot of people here for this. It's going to be a long council meeting. And it's been the practice of this council to try to move things up when there's a lot of people here. So that's just my request. I hope you do it. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
That's all our public comments?
Correct.
Okay.
If I may request, make a request.
Can you just?
No, I don't want to wait. I want to make a request now. This is on behalf of the residents. And I have heard from ten people that have asked me to make a request to move up item nine D tonight to the beginning as opposed to the end. So I'd like to make that request.
Discussion because we are not on the consent calendar yet. I'll bring that up. So Madam Clerk, is there, we're on item three. Is there a motion to waive reading and full of all resolutions and ordinances?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Councilmember Ferguson, seconded by Councilmember Knoblock to waive reading and full of resolutions and ordinances.
Okay, Councilmember Duncan? Councilmember Ferguson?
I.
Councilmember Knoblock?
I.
Mayor Potem James?
I.
And Mayor Ward?
I.
Curious five oh.
Is there any consideration of items needing immediate action? I see none.
Close session report, city attorney.
Mayor and councilors, no reportable action taken. Should note that Councilmember Ferguson was not present for the close session.
Madam Clerk, close consent items.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion, unless council staff or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. A member of the public has pulled item G, that's the La Pedriza striping plan. That's all I have for removal.
Counsel, any other items? I was going to pull item J also. Who requested J? Is that no one else, right?
I have a card of someone who wants to speak if it's pulled, but they have not asked to pull it.
Public, okay. I'll go ahead and pull that. Is there a motion to move the balance?
So move second.
Motion by Councilmember Duncan, second by Mayor Potem James.
Councilmember Duncan?
I.
Councilmember Ferguson?
I.
Councilmember Knoblock?
I.
Mayor Potem James? And Mayor Ward?
I.
Curious five oh. The next item is item G, the La Pedriza striping plan. And I have a card from Stephen Jones.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Stephen Jones. I live in the gallery in Toledo. And Pedriza is the sole access to the gallery. So I probably average about four trips a day on Pedriza on a very familiar route. The speed limit on Pedriza at the present time is forty miles per hour, which I believe is too high. It's a winding road and there's, of course, uphill and downhill and speeding is a real problem on Pedriza. When I go at Pedriza, I invert, well, I almost always go the speed limit, almost exactly the speed limit. And it's very normal that I have one or two tail gears. The people are just not content to go the speed limit. So what I think that if, I have no objection adding the bike lanes, but I think if they are added, that the speed limit should be reduced from forty to thirty-five. I think that's necessary for the safety of the bikers. These are not going to be very wide bike lanes. It looks like they're going to be five, five feet wide. So I think it's really necessary for their safety that the speed limit be reduced. And also, I'd just like to say that I very much like the idea of adding the two radar speed signs. I think that's a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a staff member? Mr. Ponzen, are you here to speak on that item?
Might be Kyle.
We should have Sahida ready to do a presentation if needed or just to answer questions.
Okay. I, I believe I reached out earlier today about this. Can you just give some overall comments about what staff is considered on this?
Yeah. Good evening, mayor and all other council members. So Pedriza is actually scheduled for a clear sale by the end of October. And to be consistent with the general plan and complete the street element and also the bicycle master plan, city staff should consider, and I actually shall consider the additional bike lane as part of any other speed improvement. So we investigated options to include bike lanes. And we added bicycle lanes because there are, I mean, the curb to curb width of the Pedriza along the road is minimum forty feet. So we had enough room to add a minimum five feet bicycle lane where feasible and also considering a buffered bike lane where feasible. So we're maintaining the, the lane configuration at the intersection. We're not removing any left turn lanes at the driveway. And also, we're, we're kind of removing the center lane where we need to provide enough room to add the bike lane. So there is also one reconfiguration at the intersection of Pedriza and Pico. We're just modifying the lane configuration from one left turn lane, one through lane and one right turn to one left, one through right and one right turn lane because we can, the true lane doesn't go anywhere. It's only a small driveway. We're going to increase the capacity for now. And in the future, we can reevaluate that reconfiguration in case that other projects build like by Gran Turm, Mission Viejo, for example, home. Yeah.
So can you tell us what the option is if, if the community wants the speed limit checked on that? What, what is possible for the city to study to look at that?
So actually, because this narrowing lane will kind of discourage speeding, which is an issue raised by residents before. So we're gonna like do the speed survey after a few months. If the city council approved the striping plan, I mean, after driver adjusts to the striping, we're gonna do the speed limit. I mean, the speed survey and identify the eighty-five percentile speed that drivers, I mean, driving at. So and then we, we may change the speed limit depending on the, on the speed survey. That we expect the speed limit, I mean, the drivers' speed go down at least by five miles per hour.
Okay. So Mr. Jones, just to answer it really quick, it will be done after we modify those lanes. And we can't do any, any other comments, but we have to do a study and we have to look at that. And we go by the eighty-fifth percentile of, of what is being driven. That's how we figure out whether we will lower or raise a speed limit. That's how we figure out that it's appropriate, but it will be studied.
And, and I think there was a point there too, Mr. Jones made by Sahida, that the narrowing of the lanes in and of itself has been shown to reduce speed. Because when people see a wider lane, they just tend to go faster. They think it's sort of a track. But the narrower lane, people are more careful. They're, they drive slower because they don't want to go outside of the lane. So we'll see how that plays out, but a very valid point.
No, I can understand that point about they would slow down. They're, they're going to be slowing down because they don't want to hit the bikers. And I think that's a problem.
Thank you. We, the public comments closed. Thank you. We just wanted to give you that update. So we need a motion to approve item G.
Excuse me, mayor?
Yes.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
I received an email today about the suggestion to eliminate the, what was called dangerous lane merge competition. Has staff looked at that to see what the accident rate is there? I mean, I've driven that street for twelve years. I live at the end though, so I'm not there right in the neighborhood in front of where the two lanes are. Then they merge into one quickly. But have you looked at the accident rate to maybe consider eliminating that if there's a problem?
Councilmember Ferguson is talking about the, the merge, I think, at the Vista Hermosa.
Vista Hermosa and Pedriza, right. It's two lanes and then it quickly becomes one.
Yeah. I received the same email from Tom, a resident living close by the intersection of Hermosa. I talked to him over the phone and I explained to him that we already looked at like moving the taper closer to the Hermosa intersection. But at this point, we don't recommend that because there are already two existing lanes serving Hermosa traffic coming from south and north. And we need to keep that. In terms of changing any lane configuration, we need to consider the improvement at the intersection also because we cannot allow south on left turn and north on right turn go together. And that, one of the lanes also can, I mean, it's very beneficial because it can be, I mean, serving the right turning vehicles going to the communities located at the right side. So we're kind of removing that traffic from the mainstream. So that will avoid a lot of conflicts, maybe potential collisions.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, and because one of his concerns was the speeding issue that I already explained to him that this narrowing lane is gonna improve the speeding. And in the future, after, I mean, we do the survey and we, if we change the speed limit, if there's any issue with the same issue, we can revisit the condition and look at the, I mean, other options for traffic calming or any other options.
Very good. Thank you for reaching out to the resident to speak with him. That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Well, I, I'd like to move the item there, Ward. I, I live in the community as well. I, I think this is, this is sort of overdue. We've had kids on e-bikes on our sidewalks. It's not safe. We need to have the bikes in their own bike lane. And, and so I'm really happy to see this. Thank you for your great work on this, Sahida. So with that, I will go ahead and and I guess, let's see, I guess I'll, I'll read the staff recommendation. I moved that we approve the restriping of Camino La Pedriza to add bike lanes in both directions as shown in attachment to the administrative report dated August fifth, twenty twenty-one. That is on file with the city clerk and authorize the staff to start the bidding process to install two electronic radar speed signs on Camino La Pedriza.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Duncan, second by Mayor Potem James.
Councilmember Duncan?
I.
Councilmember Ferguson?
I.
Councilmember Knoblock?
I.
Mayor Potem James?
I.
And Mayor Ward?
I.
Curious five oh. Next item is item J. That's the San Clemente trolley, fall extension of the twenty twenty-one San Clemente trolley service. And I do have one card.
Let's hear from the public comment first.
Okay. Nikki Rathman?
Good evening, mayor, council members and neighbors. I'm Mickey Rathman, a local resident and a local business owner on Avenida Del Mar. I feel that the city and the community of San Clemente should be incredibly proud of our trolley service. Statistics show from the operator of the trolley that San Clemente has the highest ridership of a trolley service in the Beach Cities area, which demonstrates that people love it, both locals as well as visitors to our community. The trolley, I think, is officially over, but there is a chance for it to be extended. And that's why I'm here enthusiastically showing my support for extending our trolley service to at least November fifteenth. If budget allows, extending it all the way through the end of November would also be incredible as that is the beginning of the holiday shopping season and will be the first two weeks that many businesses downtown won't have an outdoor dining deck in front of their shops, which should be an awesome increase of visibility for those stores with the trolleys driving back and forth. I know that city funds are, of course, a concern, and I think that there are some options that city staff has proposed of how many days and times to extend the trolley. I do feel that option, schedule C would be sufficient. That's running the trolley on Saturday and Sunday. If there are funds available to have it also run Friday, well, that's just a perk and we would love it. But if we do need to have some fiscal responsibility with extending the trolley service, that schedule C with running it on Saturday and Sunday would be fantastic. And if there's even any more, you know, pennies that we can add to extend that trolley service to the end of November, it would be fantastic. I know that I speak on behalf of many local business owners who couldn't be here tonight in support of extending the trolley. I would also like to add that as you're reviewing the success of this year's trolley and looking forward to next year, that we think about extending it to South San Clemente. That's where the majority of visitors who are staying in our hotels, motels and inns are. And wouldn't it be great to have that service there for them to be able to visit and connect to other cities next summer as well as local residents that do live in the south part of our beautiful town? Thank you very much.
All right. I also pulled this item, and I'd like to talk to council about the schedule. There was three options on it. I happen to go, I've been out and trying to look at the trolley. I've been at the outlet mall and I'm seeing some empty trolleys. I don't know whether some of that time was during the, the week. I'm not sure how they're running now. But Friday night, I was out after the Triton football game and I was at the Pier Bowl and there was, there was no one there. And you could not get dinner service after nine forty-five PM at, at any of them. They were pretty much all closed. With that and seeing empty trolleys, I am concerned about just increasing then just to have them be something that just goes back and forth. And it's like a, an attraction to see them go by and we might pick up some people. When I have seen the trolley, I've only seen like three, maybe five people on it if it's not empty. So I would be, I would consider item C, which is Friday and Saturday only. But I don't want to consider going past November fifteenth because I think, I don't think we have the ridership for it. And, and that's what we're supposed to be looking at here. So I'd like to set a date on that. But as a, for it being on Thursday or on Friday also, I just can't, as of what I saw last Friday after a football game, when there was thousands of people out at that game, I don't see the need for it to be on Friday.
So you're in favor of C with the exception of eliminating Friday?
Friday isn't in there on that one. Sorry. It's, it happens to not be in there. That's why I'm kind of for that. And, and I would want staff to report back to us what they're seeing.
Do we have, do we have data on ridership from staff?
We didn't ask for that. We should have asked for that before this, but I'm just telling you what I'm seeing and I've been paying attention to the trolley. But Friday, you know, there was no one out and there was plenty of parking and people were actually at all the restaurants on Del Mar, but they, they had ample parking to be there.
Mayor Ward? The problem with anecdotes is we all have a different anecdote. I look at it, you know, oftentimes I see it on Sunday and Saturday during the day. And there's considerable ridership during the day. Maybe we need to look at refining the hours. But I would certainly be in favor of continuing through November fifteenth. And typically, what you see on a Sunday is you see a lot of people going to the Pier Bowl. And when you see the, when you see the trolley coming back in the, in the late morning and the early afternoon, you don't see anyone coming back. And then it kind of flips after that. And you don't see anyone going down in late afternoon and you, 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 you see the trolley. Not, I've never seen one completely full, but you know, a dozen people, fifteen people on it, which
Returning?
Returning. I, I guess I would be inclined to punt this to the next meeting. And if staff could tell us they could have data to, to bring to us.
What is your concern not providing anything on Friday?
Oh, I don't have any concern on that. Saturday, I'm good with Saturday and Sunday.
Well, then that's option C that we could consider to, tonight.
That's fine.
Councilmember Ferguson, do you have any comment?
I can support option C as well. Okay.
I think, I think we're sort of in this limbo period where we, we have the city manager sort of bridging us and I want to stay away from that and give direction if we can.
Yes. And so that's why I pulled it. I thought we needed to pick and let staff know what, which option. So I'm hearing consensus for option C as direction to staff. Mr. Lightfoot, do you need to comment?
No, I don't need to comment. I will add, this is a program that has been managed by staff that are no longer with us in the past. So I'm catching up on this. And I did have a chance to talk to our operating partner, LAZ Parking, recently. And we actually do have some hours that have not yet been billed for this season because we did start our operations at a weekend only before ramping up to daily service in mid-June. So we do have a number of hours that we should be able to bill against. I'm going to be coordinating with OCTA to make sure that there would be no issue with reimbursement on those. But I think that the numbers that I'm seeing show that we have essentially about forty-five thousand dollars remaining in the annual allocation. So I think that any of these three options, we should be within our contracted ability to continue. So really, the, the direction would be making So really that the direction would be uh making those amendments as are attached to your um staff report. To modify Exhibit B and add Exhibit C. So that procedurally, we're we're adding um those clear definition, clearly clearly defined dates for our third-party operator.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and. I'm making that recommendation that um we go ahead and uh modify and remove. Exhibit B for Exhibit C, Schedule C, which stops the trolley. It it extends it from October first to November fifteenth. For Saturday and Sunday.
And Mayor Ward, could we also give direction to come back with ridership information at the meeting before the fifteenth? Just to see how things are going. I mean, I'm not saying we are going to extend it past the fifteenth, but it would be nice to know it how the ridership is leading up to that.
It'd be good for that for us when we make our decision next year.
Sure.
To have that data.
I I think so too. I don't know if it's gonna do anything for this year, because it's a, it's data that goes. Up to two weeks before you want to extend it. It's.
Is this data that's being currently collected that uh?
I I don't know that we're collecting data, but I would just like to know how the ridership is in October, basically.
I would think this was a vendor-driven research.
Well, we can have that come back and.
We can bring it back at the undercity manager comments and I can report out the data for the October month if you'd like.
Right, and then if you want to agenda something.
Okay.
Do that.
Sure.
Then, okay, so I made the motion uh for Schedule C.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pretend James.
Councilmember Duncan.
I.
Councilmember Ferguson.
I.
Councilmember Noblock.
I.
Mayor Pretend James.
I.
And Mayor Ward.
I.
Carrie Spivey.
Okay, so we're on public hearings and there's been a motion with no discussion yet on moving item. Sorry, ninety, nine D to the front. I'd like to talk about why I don't, I I don't want to uh do that. We have only a a few items to go before that item. And it's been agendized for other people. They know it's at the end. When we move things up like this, I think this might be one where there might be some public comment. And people are not going to going to be here for that. Uh I happen to know people ask me what time and I told them where it was on the agenda already. So I'm I'm not going to be for that. I think it's going to harm public comment. I'll save my comments for last. I do have something to say about that.
I would just say that uh there are a lot of people here apparently uh that want to speak on this item. Uh I think traditionally we've honored requests. I don't, can't remember a single request that we've turned down to to an item of one number of people been here. So I'd be supportive of the motion.
That's what I was going to say. So you made the motion, so you're you're second.
I'm just agreeing with, i- if it takes a second, I'll second the motion if there's one on the table and make sure that.
There is a motion on the table. Okay, so um we can comment on that. I just wanted to let people know what what I think and what people asked me. And I told them that it would be coming after we discuss the housing element. So. That's my comment. I'm not going to be supportive in the vote. Yeah, you have a motion by member uh mayor, I'm sorry, for Councilmember Ferguson and count uh second by Councilmember Noblock. To move nine D up to the front.
Councilmember Duncan.
No.
Councilmember Ferguson.
I.
Councilmember Noblock.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend James.
No.
Mayor Ward.
No.
Uh motion fails.
There's no public comment at this time. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Uh let's go to the next item.
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed ten minutes and public testimony. Not to exceed three minutes per speaker. While in closure, the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues and act upon the matter by motion. This evening's public hearing is to consider a city-initiated amendment to the Code of the City of San Clemente. Regarding the twenty nineteen California Fire Code, local amendments to that code and related code concerning fires on the beach. To improve fire prevention regulations and enforcement.
All right, who is our staff member?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers Adam Otamian, Deputy Community Development Director. Uh tonight, the item before you is uh the uh is an ordinance that was introduced to the camp uh by the council. On uh September seventh of this year. Because we are uh amending a state code, uh it has it, it has a slightly different process. For adoption, the adoption, instead of being a second reading, is also a public hearing as it was um for the original. Introduction of the ordinance. Essentially, this uh ordinance uh clarifies the municipal code and our local amendments. Uh to the state fire code to uh better clarify um uh violations of. Recreational fires and open burning in open space areas um and sitting on property. And it also provides the uh uh city staff of the Marine Safety Code Compliance Division and Park Rangers. The ability to enforce um uh those uh yet against those violations. So I will uh end my presentation with that. If there are any questions, I'm more than happy to to answer them at this time.
I'm not seeing any questions, council. I'll entertain a motion.
Uh Mayor Ward, you you still.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Uh I'm gonna open the public hearing. Do we have any comments?
No.
All right, thank you. We're gonna close the public hearing. Entertain a motion and I believe it has to be read.
Yeah. Go ahead. Okay, I move that we adopt ordinance number seventeen eighteen entitled, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California. Amending San Clemente Municipal Code Sections eight point one six point zero five zero and twelve point three two. Point zero five zero concerning local fire regulations and amendments to the two thousand nineteen California Fire Code. Adopted on December third, two thousand nineteen, and finding the ordinance not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. And that we find the ordinance is not subject to the requirements of SEQA for the following reasons. A, the ordinance does not qualify as project because it has no potential to result in either a direct or reasonably foreseeable. Indirect physical change in the environment at State SEQA Guidelines Section fifteen, one five three seven eight. Subdivision A. And B, the ordinance uh falls within the common sense exception set forth in State SEQA Guidelines Section one five zero six one subdivision B three. Which exempts activity from SEQA where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility. The activity in question may have significant effect on the environment.
So motion by Councilmember.
Second.
Duncan, second by Councilmember Noblock.
Councilmember Duncan.
I.
Councilmember Ferguson.
I.
Councilmember Noblock.
I.
Mayor Pretend James.
I.
And Mayor Ward.
I.
Carrie Spivey. Next item is the housing element and safety element updates. This is also a public hearing. And I do have a couple cards after you open the public hearing.
Okay. Who is our staff member? Jennifer, correct? Okay. Would you like to hear from the public first before we go into it, council? Is that okay?
Sure.
All right, so I'm gonna open the public hearing.
First speaker is Donna Vedrine, followed by Kathy Espahani.
San Clemente needs affordable housing. The housing element should be a lot stronger to ensure affordable housing gets built in our city. The city can support, encourage and facilitate the development of affordable housing. The city can create an affordable housing land trust to hold donated land to be used by a nonprofit developer. And building a lower-income affordable housing development. The city can donate its own surplus land into the Affordable Housing Land Trust for such use. The ten-acre site on Pico, owned by the Emergency Shelter Coalition. Should be added to the inventory of sites to be rezoned for affordable housing. And this land should be included in the emergency shelter overlay. The land will be donated for use as an emergency shelter and for affordable housing. Making the opening of a shelter more likely. The city should donate the old city hall site for affordable workforce housing. And Lufi should be raised to a meaningful level to cover the affordability gap. The EPA, the EPS analysis specifically supports a minimum in Lufi of ten dollars per square foot. Or ten thousand dollars per unit. The city should actively monitor and pursue the availability of other funds for affordable housing and homelessness solutions. Such as Project Room Key and Project Home Key. The city should move up its review of the inclusionary housing policy to twenty twenty three. The policy is too weak and needs to be much stronger to be effective in producing affordable housing. Thank you.
Kathy Espahani, followed by Bill Crutenger.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Espahani with the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition. As you know, our coalition has been involved in the housing element update process from the beginning. We have written many letters and public comments. And to date, we have not had a lot of success in getting you to adopt our suggestions. But we remain hopeful. To be an affordable housing advocate in San Clemente, you have to be an optimist. So I will take this perhaps last opportunity to remind you of some of our suggestions that have the most potential. For actually getting affordable housing built in our city. Um first, I'd like to talk about some of the sites that are um house, affordable housing opportunity sites. Site A um on the list of the candidate sites for rezoning, which is at one ninety Lapada. Is a terrific site. It's over two acres of vacant land. And because it's vacant land, it makes it much more likely that it will get developed. The problem that I see is that it is um it, the density recommended in the housing element is too low. It's only thirty dwelling units per acre. Our coalition would like to see the um the density at forty-five units per acre. Which is the same as recommended for Site V, the former hospital site. This part of Lapada is a perfect place for increased density. There are no nearby single-family neighborhoods which will complain about greater density. There's a golf course on one side, vacant land behind. It would be perfect for uh for forty-five units to the acre. And nonprofit developers will tell you that they need higher density to pencil out the project. So we encourage you to increase the density there to forty-five units per acre. It would be a simple fix. We hope you do it. Next, um as Donna Vedrine mentioned, we would like you to donate the former city hall site for affordable housing. San Juan Capistrano is doing that. They are building affordable housing on their former um city hall site. Our city should do the same. As Donna also mentioned, the two parcels on Pico, which are ten acres of vacant land. Which the owner wants to donate for affordable housing and for emergency housing for homeless San Clemente residents. Those parcels are the best chance for getting affordable housing built in our city. And we urge you to um to zone them for high-density residential and also as part of the SB two zone. Next, you need to strengthen the inclusionary housing ordinance. So it's in line with what other cities have. Fifteen percent of new units should be affordable. You know that the current policy of just four percent is too low and ineffective.
Is that the end?
Um I have two more.
I'm sorry, we can't do it.
Oh, okay.
It's our rules.
Well, you asked.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I wrote down what you said. Okay. Next speaker?
Yes, Bill Crutenger, followed by Cord Bauer.
Good evening, Mayor Ward, council. As one member and of of the Human Affairs Committee and certainly not speaking on behalf of the committee. It's my hope that council will look to our committee for guidance and influence. On those parts of the housing element that are quite germane to that committee. It doesn't look like council has in the past used the uh Human Affairs Committee to guide housing policy. And that's, that's a real missed opportunity, because you've got a lot of people there that are very engaged and that care a great deal about these subjects. You know, the inclusionary housing policy is one that I was a an advocate for changing specifically personally. And I feel like the inaction on that is a serious missed opportunity. And I recall that um council member Noblock wanted it brought back. And I hope it's not put off till twenty twenty three. Um I hope that it's brought back much sooner so that it can be worked on. And I guess that's all I have on the housing element. I I understand that this is documented, has to go for approval. I I do hope that it gets approved, but I look forward to working with all of you on those policies as we move forward. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh this is off the cuff, as you could see. Housing, affordable housing in California is a huge, huge issue. I'm not sure that we're gonna cure it here. What I keep hearing about is affordable housing. What I don't hear about are the reasons why some of these people need to have affordable housing. If we had Chris Megason here, he would tell you that if there are people that are mentally ill. If there are people that are having substance abuse issues. If you put them in a house, that's nice, they won't get fixed. They need professional help. So if what you're trying to do is solve the homeless problem with with affordable housing. That's like trying to make a strawberry daiquiri with a hammer. It doesn't work. This won't work. I hope that you can see through this and you can through see through the expense of this. Thank you.
Is that it? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I had a couple of questions before any council speaks of comments that I heard. Jennifer, on Site A, it was suggested simple fix. Let's throw in forty-five units per acre on something that's only two acres. Can you talk about why that might be an issue? With development?
Sure, I did. The particular density that was analyzed for Site A was done so to be consistent with the. The city's existing medium-density residential at thirty units per acre. In comparison, um Site U is within the Toledo specific plan. Which has a a much higher density for residential high at forty units per acre. So there was the intent to maintain consistency there.
Okay, so I wanted that question. Also, um I think Mr. Crutenger alluded to it at the end, but. The the in Lufi is not part of what we're doing tonight.
No, changing the in Lufi um is not part of your um consideration tonight. However, the inclusionary housing program remains a program in the housing element itself. And there's two tracks to that. Um one is coming back um to council before the end of the year. With the inclusionary housing program that you considered earlier this year. The second track is, as proposed in the housing element, is reconsidering, evaluating and. Potentially updating that same program later in this planning cycle. And in specifically, right now, it's proposed in twenty twenty five.
All right, so those were my questions that I heard from the audience. Does anyone have any questions of staff or?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Okay, one is um discussions about the rezoning that we have sort of laid the groundwork. For in in the housing element. Is that also something that will be coming back at some point for people to have input into uh whether certain sites are. Ultimately rezoned or, you know, potentially even whether there might be other sites added or dropped?
Uh yes, and thank you for asking that question. Um tonight, you're not approving the actual rezoning of these sites. You are approving and um uh you would be adopting the housing element, showing the state that we have the potential to plan for the number of units. Were required to plan for. Uh and to answer your question more directly, there's a program within the housing element for rezoning. And that's to occur within the next three years. It has um a elements that require outreach and person public comments. We added in there um consideration of other sites that have not yet been identified, if need be.
Okay, um and the on the map here, and we talked about a little bit of this, Jennifer, there's the site B off Lapada. Which is up sort of by. there's the Site B off Lapada, which is up sort of by, on the backside of the Marblehead, part of the Marblehead development. Is that, is that still within our zone? I, I thought we had, that that was a parcel that is not, no longer being considered for rezoning.
So on your, your map that you have now, B as in boy, that parcel is still on. The parcel that was removed after a survey, perhaps are you referring to that parcel on Veracruz?
Oh, that's what I'm talking about. Sorry.
Yes, and so that's not located on our current list of potential rezoned sites.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I was missed. Okay, good. Glad to see that not there. Okay, that's all I have.
Mayor Poten.
Jennifer, I think it's important to clarify at this point. This is actually not a plan. This is showing the state we have the ability to put together a plan. Would that be a correct way of summing it up?
Yes, specifically as it relates to potential rezoning. But it, there is a plan part of it for housing.
I get that.
Is that your comment?
That's my only comment.
Oh, thanks. I just want to say that staff did a very good job. It reads really well. And, and I just see success with the Housing Community Development Department of the State. Looks really good. So good job on that, all of you that were involved. Appreciate it.
So I'd like to echo that, and thanks for that comment. I've never seen so many sites in any housing element update that I've had to go through since I've been on council in 2014. And I think staff went above and beyond, especially on the public comments. And we did take into account all of the public comments. And I know staff did and made some changes. So with that, thank you. It is, it is one of the best plans I think we've had, and, and there's opportunities there. And I appreciate that. But I think the last time we did a major consideration, we were looking at the general plan and, and doing overlays on sites. So this, this is a pretty comprehensive report, and I do hope that it does get approved also. So.
Mayor, I'll make a motion if this were a bit. I move that we adopt Resolution 21-40 entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, adopting environmental findings pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, certifying the program, environmental impact report, State Clearing House Number 2021020256 regarding the housing element and safety. Housing updates, adopting statement of overriding considerations, adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approving the general plan amendment PLN 20-036 to adopt the housing element and safety element updates. And also to authorize staff to provide the adopted housing element, to provide the adopted housing element to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Motion by Councilmember Noblock, seconded by Councilmember Duncan.
Councilmember Duncan?
I.
Councilmember Ferguson?
I.
Councilmember Noblock?
I.
Mayor Poten James?
I.
Mayor Ward?
I.
Currys 5-0.
Unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you for your work.
Moving on to unfinished business. Report from the City Manager and Beaches Parks and Recreation Director concerning the possibility of amending the coded City of San Clemente as it relates to special event permits, amplified sound, and excessive noise in public areas.
Mayor, members of the City Council, staff, both Samantha Wiley, the Beaches Park and Recreation Director, Adam Otamian, our Community Development Deputy Director, and then Scott Smith, our City Attorney, are present to answer any questions. This is a bring back based on council direction at a previous meeting, which we are now bringing back that, those changes as a basically new introduction and a first reading. And so with that, we stand ready to answer any questions the council may have.
I haven't asked if there's any public comment yet, but would you like to do that first? Is there any public comment?
I don't have any cards.
Okay, just checking on that. Councilmember Duncan, I believe you asked for this to come back. Would you like to make any comments?
Yeah, I think, well, I want to thank Scott for sort of coming back with, with what had been suggested by the council at the prior meeting. We wanted to make sure that we both gave the city some opportunity to prepare, de-conflict potential events happening at our parks in particular. But we also wanted to make sure that we protected First Amendment rights, that we made sure that people felt that they were able to have, to conduct their expressive activities without undue restrictions from the city. We wanted to make sure we didn't make ourselves a target for lawsuits from enterprising attorneys who, who might find fodder in, in, in any kind of process for, for expressive conduct. So I like the, I like the ordinance. We've talked about why, why it's included in this special event ordinance instead of having its own separate provision. So there's a one-stop shop for people to go to for instructions on how they're going to, what, what is required for different activities. So, yeah, I mean, to summarize, the ordinance now allows for expressive activities. There's no permit requirement. You do have to provide notice 48 hours in advance and provide a lot of the same information that you would provide for the permitting. But there's no procedure by the city to gain approval. It's just a notice requirement. And I think that's a good balance between the interests. So if there's, unless there's any other comments, I'd be prepared to make the motion.
I'll speak to the motion if there is one seconded, but I'll speak to it in advance of the motion being seconded. I'm not, I'm not supportive of the ordinance. I, I think you're right, Chris. We've, we've softened it up by just getting notification. But I don't think it's a free society's obligation to have to tell their government when they want to assemble, when the Constitution says we have freedom of assembly. And while we say it's nice to have advanced notice, that notice could be denied. There's no, it says the, the City Manager may issue a permit. City Manager may, for whatever reason, decide not to issue a permit. We don't know what future City Managers will do.
Now, there's no permit requirement for.
Exactly, but it's notification. It's notification. And once, once they're notified, information has to be provided on a form. And if that form isn't filled out properly, it gets rejected. I think it's notification, and I don't think that this city council should be asking any of its citizens to request in advance permission or notification if they want to exercise their constitutional rights of freedom of assembly. So that's my position, and I won't be voting for the ordinance.
Councilmember Ferguson? No comments from the public. Thanks, Mayor Ward. Thank you, Brett.
So I concur with Councilmember Noblock's comments. First Amendment doesn't require us to notify our government and provide a long list of specific information required in this ordinance. And it's a lot of information. It's notice in advance, 48 hours in advance. Free speech is, is free whenever someone wants to go and assemble freely and speak their minds. So I'm, I'm going to stand for the Constitution there and not involve the government, my ability or others' ability to speak freely. And then also, I noticed in this ordinance, there's no penalties rolled in. So it's really, on its face, it doesn't have any teeth. And that's concerning as well, because it opens us up to challenges, legal challenges, that we have to defend this ordinance and pay damages, I'm certain. And that's hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I don't want to see us go down that, that road. We've already been sued before in a First Amendment, 14th Amendment challenge at a council meeting a couple of years ago. It's embarrassing to see us even go down this, this path with violating people's freedoms in San Clemente. And that said, I just wanted to point out for the public that the agenda report doesn't actually include. It includes basically a chronological history of the occurrences since we started discussing this. But it is missing, it is missing a September 7 meeting in which we had the ordinance come back for a second time after it was already approved on August 17th on a three to two vote with Noblock and Ferguson dissenting. So that's missing from this agenda report. So it's actually been about five times this has been addressed. Tonight's the fifth time, I believe.
Yeah, can you give the page number that you're speaking on?
Yeah, page, it'd be page 8A1, 8A1.
You're talking about the actual resolution.
Oh, I'm just reading the report for the people that are reading this for the first time. On the background.
8A, okay, 8A1.
8A1. It doesn't include the September 7 meeting, in which this was addressed. And then council asked that the draft be revised at the September 7 meeting. It wasn't at the August 17 meeting, because August 17 meeting, this council approved it on a three to two vote. So that's important to note as well. And just make sure, I don't, we've got to make sure that's not in the resolution. So it's cleaned up if, if it is adopted tonight. But I'm, I'm a no. I can't support this. Thanks. City Attorney, would you please?
We don't need to clap in between. I asked anyone if they had comments and there was none. Thank you. We're in deliberation. Scott, do we need to add the September 7 date?
It's, it's not in the body of the ordinance. That was just meant to be the procedural history. And that, I, I think what happened, that date was the same as what happened the prior date. So we didn't include everything. It was a four minutes from work already.
Okay.
Appreciate the part taken.
All right. I'm okay with it not being in there. Madam Clerk, you can look at that and see whether that should be added. But it's not going to change our action tonight. If you wanted to modify that and just add that. I, I would concur with, with what you said. I think that it, it, it does take into account expressive speech. There's absolutely no form that someone has to fill out. There's none for that. If anyone wants to meet or do something ahead of time, and it's less than the 48 hours, I think what we've done in the past is they've called the City Manager and staff has accommodated then and helped them with that. So it's not like we're going to be turning that down.
And we dropped the insurance requirement, did we not?
Yeah, there's no, there's no conditions on, there's no permit, and so there's no conditions on.
And so I think it's, it's strange to hear that it doesn't have any teeth when the complaint was that we had to fill out a form and that there was maybe money involved and we were going to penalize them. So we're trying to have it both ways, but notice to the city is a good thing, and we do have to modify our ordinance as it stands now. So I believe you made, did you make a motion? Will you?
So I'm going to have a question. It's going to go to Captain Benfield and to the City Attorney. So if, if we had a group that was demonstrating and, and OCSD wanted to declare it a unlawful assembly, would they be able to do that if we have nothing at all? And would they be able to do that if they, if we had this special event permit procedure in place? So that's, that's going to both Captain Benfield and, and to you, Scott.
Do you want me to go first? Or Captain?
What, 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 at what point do you declare unlawful assembly?
Public safety.
Blocking the traffic.
Does that answer your question?
It, it does. I, I get, I don't want to put, I'm going to, I am going to put Captain Benfield on this. But would you rather live in a community where we have special event permit policy in place? Or would you rather police, not live, police? Or would you rather police in a community where there's not a special event permit?
Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Is there a motion?
I'd just like to ask one last question, because I think it was, it was sort of brought up. Can, this is for City Attorney Smith. Can, can the city, is the city constitutionally allowed to have a permit requirement for expressive activity in a public forum?
Yeah, the, the city can regulate the time, place, and manner of expressive speech. It can require a permit. That's subject to strict scrutiny, though, if it were required in a hypothetical ordinance, because it's not required.
Right, so we are, we are doing less than we are constitutionally authorized to do.
Way less.
And or, way less in order to allow for additional First Amendment activities that we actually could monitor, but we're choosing not to.
That was the direction last time. And if I could, this is in contrast to your current ordinance, which requires permits for all gatherings, has unfettered discretion left to the, to the people reviewing the permit. So this is a vast improvement on what's now wide-open regulation of free speech in the city.
And so this puts us on better constitutional footing in terms of defending the ordinance.
Yeah, because right now, there's no constraints whatsoever on what staff might impose on expressive speech.
Okay.
So it's an update. It's a necessary.
I think it, well, it's a necessary update, and it's, it's progress, and it brings us, it, it, it puts us in a better position to, to defend our special event permit if there is a constitutional challenge.
That was a little point.
Okay, I'm prepared to make the motion.
Thank you.
All right. I move that we introduce ordinance number 1717 entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, Amending San Clemente Municipal Code Chapters 8.72 and 12.34 relating to special event permits and Sections 8.48.080 and 8.48.090C relating to the amplified sound and excessive noise in public places, renumbering the municipal code accordingly, and finding the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. That's the motion.
Seconded by Mayor Poten.
Councilmember Duncan?
I.
Councilmember Ferguson?
No.
Councilmember Noblock?
No.
Mayor Poten James?
I.
And Mayor Ward?
I.
Three to two.
New business.
New business. This is the warrant register and payroll register.
Motion to approve warrant and payroll register.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Mayor Poten James.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Duncan.
Councilmember Duncan?
I.
Councilmember Ferguson?
No.
Councilmember Noblock?
I.
Mayor Poten James?
I.
And Mayor Ward?
I.
Currys 4-1.
Could I ask a procedural question? Maybe this is for, for the City Manager. You know, this is a pet peeve of mine. I just don't see how warrant register and payroll register are new business, because they're business that's not new. We hear about it every time. Is it possible to, how would I move to have a separate category of, say, repeat business? Just to carve it out, to make it more clear, because it, it sort of doesn't fit with the other new business.
Correct. Prior council did provide direction to remove it from consent calendar, to put it on new business. So council today could make any changes to that in whether it's back on consent or a separate category, et cetera. We just need a motion, a second and a third to give staff that direction.
Councilmember Duncan, would you consider putting it back on the consent calendar?
Um.
Where it, it's only if a council member pulls it and they have to identify why they're pulling it. I'm just, I'm trying to understand why I put it in a different category.
It's just not new business. It bothers me that it, that our first new business is always something that's not new.
Chris, to put it on the consent calendar?
All right, I'll move to put it on the consent.
Motion by Councilmember Duncan. This is proper City Attorney.
Yeah, you're talking about the order of future agendas, and that's always in order.
Okay.
Okay. And I think that's a second by Councilmember Noblock to move it back. Or do we need to agendize it to the next meeting?
You can take that action prospectively tonight.
Thank you. So the motion is to move it to consent calendar in future meetings.
Councilmember Duncan?
I.
Councilmember Ferguson?
I.
Councilmember Noblock?
I.
Mayor Poten James?
I.
And Mayor Ward?
I.
Currys 5-0.
Thank you, Councilmember Duncan.
We have a point of order card. Brad Malamud saying this action was not agendized.
All right, so I think we've already.
Yeah, the Brown Act exempts putting things on future, acting on things for future agendas. And I think since you can add something to a future agenda, you can also order it.
Thank you. What is our next item?
The next item is item B, consideration of adopting a resolution in support of a veteran cemetery in Anaheim Hills. I have a couple of cards on this.
All right, let's hear from the public.
Okay, first card is from Bill Cook, followed by Wayne Yost.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is an honor and a pleasure to be here tonight. I am Bill Cook, resident.
I am Bill Cook, resident of Mission Viejo, United States Marine Corps Vietnam Veteran of the Tet Offensive, chairman of the Orange County Veterans Memorial Park Foundation and a board member of Valor. And I'm here to express our appreciation and encouragement for your resolution this evening in support of the veteran cemetery in Anaheim Hills, the Gibson Canyon location. Orange County is home to 130,000 veterans. And for as long as I've been here, there has been no veteran cemetery in Orange County. And there is no veterans hospital either, when it comes down to that. San Diego has two cemeteries and a hospital. LA has two hospitals and a cemetery and Riverside has one of each, but Orange County has none. And we've been, a number of us that thought that was just not right. And we've been working on that for the better part of two decades. For most of the last decade, we've been slugging it out with some success and a lot of frustration. But we've moved on now to a site that was donated by the Irvine Company to the county of Orange. And a portion of that is set aside, 260 plus acres is set aside for a veteran cemetery and a civilian cemetery side by side. It will be a unique location. Of course, when we veterans got to take a look at the site and we get, we were given our druthers as to what part of it we wanted. We took the high ground, of course. But it is coming down the 91 freeway as you're heading out through Corona. You will look straight up the hill at rows of veteran headstones shining in the setting sun with a big American flag on top. This will be a monument. This will be a landmark that Orange County will be proud of for the next hundred years and beyond. And we thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for adding your support to the Orange County Veterans Memorial Park, which will be known as the Southern California Veterans Cemetery. Thank you.
Good evening, Miss Mayor, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Staff, Community Members of San Clemente. My name is Wayne Yost. I'm the Senior Vice Commander for the Veterans of Foreign Wars. And I manage all of the VFW posts in Orange County and the inland empire. The Veteran Cemetery Project, as Bill stated, was about two decades old. Currently, any family members wishing to visit their departed members have to travel to either Riverside, down to South San Diego, or up to LA. For many of the older people, this is an arduous all day journey fighting traffic back and forth. The original site was slated for the El Toro Marine Base located in Irvine, since many Orange County veterans served and deployed from that location. It was necessary to have a specific location at the plan. So the artist site located at the runway was submitted to the US Department of Veterans Affairs. Eventually it became apparent that the artist site was untenable because of the hazardous waste removals and other factors. The Irvine Company has donated, donated over 250 acres at the Gibson Canyon site. So there would be literally no land purchase. On July 1st of this year, a large rally was held at the Gibson Canyon location and all of the Orange County Board of Supervisors, mayors from many cities and many political leaders from both the state and national levels attended, in addition to over 160 veteran organizations. We had another rally about two weeks ago with similar results. So far, we have had virtually every city in Orange County with the exception of three. And they are on the agenda in the near future and they have unanimously supported this location. The Orange County Board of Supervisors has donated $20 million to initial development of the site. And there is an additional $27 million through the cemetery district. On behalf of the veterans of Orange County, I'm requesting that your city adopt this proposal. Our veterans have served, fought, bled and died to protect the liberties and our way of life. And I encourage you to also support this project. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Ask these gentlemen a couple of questions.
You can, which one? Would you like them both to?
Yeah, both of them, if they both get approached. I just have a couple of questions. Would this ultimately become a, a, a federal veteran cemetery? Or this is going to become a 501(c)(3) or?
This is going to be a state veteran cemetery.
Got it.
There are, there are presently three state veteran cemeteries. There was one in IGO. You know where that is, right?
No.
Well, for all intents and purposes, for us, it might as well be in Oregon. It's in Redding. There's another one that opened recently and that is called Central Coast Veteran Cemetery. It's on the old fort along Monterey there. It took the people who pursued that project 25 years to bring that to fruition. So we knew we were in for a long battle. There's another one next to the veterans home in Yountville, which is just for those who are deceased from the veterans home. The south of Monterey, there is none. The reason it's a state veteran cemetery is there's something called the federal millennium rule, which dictates that if there is a cemetery within a 70 mile circumference or radius, if you will, that has available space, there can't be another federal veteran cemetery located nearby. And that was always given to us as the reason early on is why we're not going to get a veteran cemetery. But we can get a state veteran cemetery and the federal veterans administration has a grant program that contributes to that. And we're already in queue for the first $10 million of that. We just need to specify the site and that then goes on with successive grants. 10 more grants scheduled over a hundred years. But since the veterans administration has already told us that they expect this to be one of the busiest veterans cemeteries in the nation, that we expect that schedule to be accelerated.
It's, it's, go ahead.
Councilman, just to expand on your question. This is going to be a dual purpose cemetery. So approximately half of it, of 125 acres will be designated for veterans. The other half, approximately 125 acres will be for non-veterans. And there will be a bridge connecting the two. So people that are visiting their relatives who have passed away in the non-veteran section can simply walk across that bridge and visit their relatives in the veteran cemetery.
Let me expand upon that also. One of the, the most interesting features of the dual cemetery is a place for our allied veterans to rest. We have a lot of arbans and rocks that we serve with in various wars. A lot of their families here and they wanted a place to rest. Without a DD 214, they cannot rest in the veteran cemetery. But they can rest adjacent to us and that we think is very honorable.
Are there any roadblocks to this right now or are you guys?
We're, 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 we're moving forward. Since, since we stepped aside from our pursuit of El Toro, the movement to Gibson Canyon has, has moved it at a great rush. It's, it's like nobody wanted to get into the Irvine referendum petition litigation briar patch. But once we stepped away from that, every community, every veterans organization has, has stepped forward in a great rush to help us out. We will need some enabling legislation out of Sacramento. We expect that to come out of the next session.
Gentlemen, thank you. You, you're doing God's work. The, you look at the Miramar Veteran Cemetery. It's amazing. When they first started putting that there, I said, who the hell would want to be there? It's, 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 it's filling up and it's a beautiful location. And thank you very much for what you're doing. I'm going to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd move that we approve this resolution. I think it's a, it's a wonderful benefit for the veterans, their families, extended families. So I would just move that we approve the resolution. I don't see a resolution number on it, but.
21 dash 41.
Okay, 21 dash.
Four one.
Forty one. So I, I, I move that we adopt resolution 21 dash 41 entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, Supporting the Orange County Veteran Cemetery in Anaheim Hills.
Motion by Councilmember Duncan. Is there a second?
Not a lot. Second.
Second by Councilmember Duncan. And I, before we vote, I would just say congratulations on finally getting a resolution. We're happy to hear that. Go ahead. Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
The next item is consideration of establishing an endowment fund to support parks and recreation facilities. I don't have any speaker cards on this item. Mayor Pro Tim James and Councilmember Noblock. Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. We do have a staff recommendation on this. Who's our staff member? Samantha.
Good evening, Mayor Ward, Samantha Wiley, Beaches Parks and Recreation Director. And thank you for this time. I, I, this item is coming back to the council and it's at the council's request. Right now, the staff recommendation is actually to incorporate this item into the long-term financial plan. Staff sees that it would be more of a fit to include a white paper in the LTFP coming up in 2022, where there would be a better opportunity for our financial services officer to provide some in-depth detail on what an endowment fund looks like for a municipal, municipality. And also get some better perspective from the city attorney's office as well on possible next steps and any kind of ramifications or implications that could come along with an endowment fund. So with that, that is really the staff report. It was very brief, but this, it feels like the best direction as this does have really long-term impacts on our, on our city.
Is there any questions?
Just a quick question. Samantha, would you envision naming rights on some of our parks as a part of the fundraising effort?
Certainly, yes, that would be a very much an integral part of an endowment program. We don't really have a formal naming policy. We certainly have named facilities and parks. Those are typically addressed as a, as a case by case basis by the seated council at that time. But that would be a, a big component to this, yes.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
And what would you see as, would we have, would we pursue a legacy gift program?
That, that absolutely would be considered as well through this. There's, I think, a couple of different ways that you can approach an endowment fund. Certainly, I think the biggest factor is that it does need to have potentially a separate body that really manages the funds separate from the council, any commission. Even at a staff level, there needs to be a separate advisory body that really manages the day to day of it as well. Yes.
So, Madam Mayor, I'm prepared to make the motion.
One moment.
Thanks, Mayor Ward. Have a question, a couple of questions of Samantha. And what happened to the care program? That was our naming program for recreational facilities and amenities.
So the care program is actually specific to bench donations. It's a memorial bench donation program. It still does exist. It's quite popular. And, and that came up with several years ago, an opportunity for residents to donate an amenity, specifically a bench or a picnic table within a park that would recognize, commemorate, remember a loved one or a close community member. That program is still active today. It allows a plaque to go on a bench, basically.
How about the tiles? We're not doing tiles anymore on the steps at El Portao.
We've not, we finished the El Portao project. Certainly, those, those have been looked at as fundraising opportunities for the Friends Foundation. Pure Pride's looked at those, some of our, our major partners. I know Courtney Sandcastle has considered doing something to get in that playground. Again, this, this is very much different from, I think, the, any of those programs. This is a very larger picture on how we fund long-term recreation and parks facilities.
And why isn't our general fund doing that already with the taxes we collect? Sales tax, property tax, that's what it's for. And we're creating another layer and a nonprofit run by a government, which I, I have huge concerns about that with our city government running a nonprofit. But why, why do we need this money? Are we running out of money to maintain our facilities and construct new?
No, I, I don't think that's the, that's the intent with this. I think it's to provide a long-term vision for, for the future build out of our parks and our facilities now. And this is the point that there's not intended to be any action taken tonight, but rather give council opportunity to take a deeper dive into the, the prospect of it through the LTFP. And all of that can be included at council's request if that's a desire.
The visions created, you know, every year with what we do, it's the CIP program. And, you know, I, I just, I just don't find.
If I may, Mayor.
Can you get a good, excuse me, I'm not finished yet, please, Eric Sun, I'm not finished yet. Can you wrap it up if you're talking to staff? No, not yet. So yes, I'm just trying to wrap my head around that, especially when we have the Friends of the Beaches Parks and Rec Foundation too, that does so much fundraising as well, as well as our wish book. So I just, I am just concerned. I don't know why this, these funds are, are so needed to create a nonprofit. And have you looked at other cities that have nonprofits raising money for parks, maintenance of facilities?
Yes, I, I, staff have done a very cursory review of other cities. There are other local municipalities that do something similar. It's an endowment fund specifically. And again, I, I would be happy to provide fuller detail and get a better review from those agencies through the LTFP process.
That's going to be really important. And Mr. Sun, maybe you can ask us, do we have a money problem? Is that?
No, no, there's no money problem. Specifically, this was a recommendation out of the original park master plan update that was done a couple of years ago. And so as the BPR Commission and the council will eventually be looking at the site specific plans and we use that as an example. Again, very conceptual, very much throwing a lot of ideas on the walls. But great examples would be with Steed Park, a pump track or skate park amenity add-ons. This endowment would allow for those fundraising efforts to help in a public-private partnership with the city to be able to build a skate park amenity add-on at Steed Park or to a pump track or in the example of Glycos, who's wanting to work with us in a partnership. And so this endowment opens that door for agencies who want to partner with the city on specific amenities or improvements or maintenance in the future that benefits both private and public. And so again, there is no budget issue. This was something that was directed out of the park master plan update. And the LTFP will have a full opportunity for the council to discuss and deliberate on the future of that.
Okay, big worthwhile to, thank you, to look at the history. I know I, as a staff member, I served at a liaison with the Friends and Beaches Parks and Rec Foundation. And we, we did pursue a full-blown program to do public-private partnerships. We were trying to fill the $14 million funding gap for Vista Hermosa Sports Park and eventually sold the land to Target and it filled the gap. But there's really a slow going. So hopefully you can look back on that and see what worked and what didn't. But maybe it could be timing too in the economy. I, I don't remember exactly the years that we did that, but it was about two years. But little things, you know, we got little things which were great too, because people got their name on the park, right? They got the, the bricks, the pavers, tiles. Naming Aquatics Room was wonderful after a boy in town, wonderful swimmer who passed. So they're really good feeling and rewarding things to do. So anyhow, well, thank you. I had a lot of questions and you've answered them. Thanks, Samantha and Eric. Appreciate that.
All right.
Good question.
Yes. Before you do that, I'd just like to say for history's sake that we did try for a number of years before the Vista Hermosa Park was open to find someone to, to sponsor that and name it. And we, we had none. So I think this is great and all we're approving tonight is a white paper to come back in our long-term financial plan. And I think staff heard some of the concerns and I, you know, trust that they're going to come back with all the information necessary to make a decision.
So I, I would move to direct staff to prepare a white paper on the feasibility and possibility of establishing an endowment fund for parks and recreation facilities to be included in the upcoming long-term financial plan.
Okay, motion by Mayor Pro Tim James, a second by Councilmember Noblock. Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
That Currys five oh. Is anyone needing a break?
Yes.
10 minutes? 10 minutes or five minutes?
Five is enough.
Okay, but no. Just come straight back to the dais to get five minutes. Thank you. Can we have quiet, please? Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Yes. The next item is possibility of removing Mayor Potem James from the office of Mayor Potem. We do have speaker cards on this item.
All right. How many cards do we have?
About 14.
Okay, so what we're, I'm going to ask is that the clerk is going to read three names in a row and ask, don't stand next to each other, but kind of line up so that we can take comments one after the other.
Okay.
So the first three?
Yeah, well, the first two.
Okay.
Are AVA reading requests.
All right, let's hear those.
And the first one is from Sharon Williams. "The City of San Clemente, in partnership with the community we serve, will foster a tradition dedicated to maintaining a safe, healthy atmosphere in which to live, work, and play. This is the first part of the city's mission statement and is a good reminder. When I think of the role of a city council member, in addition to holding up the city's motto, I think of leadership. Leadership can take many forms, but most importantly, it's defined by character and integrity. And of course, we all know, character is most defined in times of challenge and controversy. That would apply twofold to this item discussion, to both the character displayed by Jean James on the sheriff's recording and the character of those on council who have remained silent on the matter. It's fairly obvious that there are three council members, who are the current majority, holding the power of policymaking in the city. It appears that power is so enticing that some council members refuse to rock the compadre boat. Visions of old boys' club-type activities and cronyism come to mind as one of their boys could be in the hot seat. But as General Douglas MacArthur so eloquently stated, "A true leader has the confidence to stand alone, the courage to make tough decisions, and compassion to listen to the needs of others. He does not set out to be a leader, but becomes one by the equality of his actions and the integrity of his, is his intent. I hope to see council do the right thing and raise the bar for what leadership is in this town. We, the residents of San Clemente, deserve integrity and character in those that represent us." The next comment includes profanity, including two F-words and an A-word.
Please delete those.
Which I will be replacing with the word expletive. A full copy of the unredacted comment is available for review from my office. My name is, I need to reset this. My name is Michael and grew up in San Clemente and graduated from San Clemente High. It was reported in the SC Times that Mayor Potem Jean James tracked down stalk and threatened a drag show performer. The letters from jeanjames@cox.net and were signed Jean Walker James CPP MBA MPA. In his first email, Mayor Potem James tells the performer, "Let me tell you something, you expletive freak of nature." It goes on, "I'm not going to threaten your expletive, expletive. If I knew we were going to end our engagement due to your freak show, I would have kicked your expletive on the spot and gone out with a bang." The performer replies back that he has no idea what James is talking about and tells James he's no longer wishes to engage. Mayor Potem James continues with a new email saying that he feels compelled to respond. "The day will come, and trust me, it will, in which two Americans will become increasingly weary of your kind and what you are doing to the moral fabric of America. They will take assertive action to rid our society of blight that is staining America. I stand ready to cheer on, encourage, and support these, what will take part in what will be a very noble endeavor to cleanse America of riffraff. In closing, I have the three words for you, expletive, you expletive, Jean Walker James CCP MBA MPA. Councilmember Duncan, who repeatedly calls Jean James my compadre at the dais, can and at the end of most council meetings be found with Jean James at the Red Fox Lounge. Councilmember Duncan, do share tips and suggestions with Jean James on his desire to support in an act of final solution to cleanse America? Councilman Duncan, do you support James' call for mass extermination of non-heterosexuals? Or do you support his personal efforts in terrorizing and telling a drag performer that he was lucky to have escaped and not have James kick his expletive, expletive? Since your time on council, your compadre has attempted to assault a motorcycle office, office and assaulted a fellow council member." Okay, the next three cards.
All right.
Will be from Amanda Kitnia, followed by Martina, followed by Rick Lefler.
Okay, and please just come up and kind of stand on deck, six feet from each other or more. Thank you. Go ahead, Martina. I'm sorry, Amanda, go ahead.
When I heard about the events after the last city council meeting in a Voice OC article, San Clemente Councilmember, Councilman files police report on colleague after heated argument, I was overwhelmed by the audacity of Mayor Potem James' actions. Just earlier that evening, I had spoken about Jean's abhorrent behavior against Deputy Medina and the release of closed-session discussions. I requested the removal of his mayor pro temp title then, and I'm doing so tonight. The assault and battery of Councilmember Novak is a clear sign that action needs to be taken. What would, who would have known something like this would have happened? Lots of people have encountered Jean James, like his smoking out of the homeless at North Beach or brandishing a gun at the HOA. However, the recent conduct reinforces a problem that needs to be addressed. This isn't the first time with, within the past couple of weeks where Mayor Potem James has been in the media for his own professional and unethical behavior. His horrifically disrespectful treatment of Deputy Medina, his apparent abuse of power by using his mayor pro temp status to call Captain Manharts is inexcusable. Most importantly, slamming on his brakes could have caused serious injury and harm to the deputy and drivers behind him. This is especially important since the deputy was on a motorcycle and injury can easily occur, not to mention the debt, that Deputy Medina had his emergency lights and his forward-facing light on, and Mayor Potem James even admitted to seeing the deputy, and therefore they had no, there was no reason to slam on his brakes besides a possible lack of regard for, for the value of human life. People have been warning our city council members of his behavior, such as Councilmember Duncan. In the past, in 2019, prior to being elected, Jean James made statements about wanting to punch former members of the dais due to them not addressing issues that he raised. He was suppressing the urge to punch them for years. Mayor Potem James should be stripped of his title and be suspended and not be reinstated until the completion of an anger management course. As an elected official, he represents the city at, at events, and he's, and if he's unable to restrain, restrain his emotion, it looks bad upon the city, as well as having some legal consequences of that. Mayor Potem James needs to learn that there are consequences for his actions and be reprimanded for them. Additionally, last week, I was asking for the immediate censorship of Mayor Potem James for his following statements. "I have reviewed documentation from the investigation, and there were six attempts to have Ferguson be interviewed by the investigator, which she has refused to cooperate," James said in a Monday text message. His statements have to be closed-session discussion, and when the, when is the city going to censor him for that disclosure of closed-session discussion? Mayor Potem James further added, "This lawsuit appears to be nothing more than a distraction to direct attention away from the investigation and her pattern of abusive behavior." It seems like he's talking about his abusive behavior against Councilmember Novak and all the other.
Thank you.
Horrific treatment.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wheeler.
So I'd like to say, I don't think that this motion goes far enough. It's a tap on the hand just to strip him of his mayor pro temp title. And I think I already know how this vote is going to roll. It's going to be a deadlock. And it was indicated tonight the way that Councilmember Chris Duncan and Mayor Ward voted not to move the item up on the agenda. It hasn't been done before. And then take, taking a short recess thereafter. I, I think, you know, you've, you've given an nod about which way you're going to vote. In any event, Kathy Ward did also say on her Facebook profile, "What I meant to add, it's more disappointing to see anyone who wants to get a copy of a private matter, such as traffic stop, in order to put it in line and try to embarrass a council member." Well, Madam Mayor, it was Jean James that brought the city and his role into the matter by using the mayor, using his title, Mayor Pro Temp. It was him that did it. I find it very unique that the city is trying to attach itself to a civil lawsuit that he's named as an individual, but is not addressing this matter. Now it's suddenly a private matter. Should the city also go to the CGPA to pay Jean's traffic ticket on the matter? I don't know. Councilmember Duncan, the matter's escalated because Jean put his hands on a fellow council member. Now, you claim that you didn't see it happen. Maybe you didn't see it happen. The problem is, is that Jean admitted that he put his hands on Councilmember Novak. So are you going to support a council member putting his hands on another council member simply because they did not like the motion brought forth? Another thing, there was you in the room, there was, there was Councilmember Novak in the room. Excuse me?
We were all in the room.
Oh, well, that's not what was reported, but in any, it doesn't really matter. I, I don't think you have the, 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 the right to interfere with my comment. In any event, I, yes, I would like to reclaim my time. So this happened after, after the meeting agended or ended, okay? So now he's trying to discuss items that are on the agenda, okay, with a quorum of council members. That's a Brown Act violation, another one that the city's committed.
Mr. Lefler? After Mr. Lefler, what is the next three?
After Rick Lefler will be Dee Coleman, Cord Bauer, and Louise Herbert.
All right, thank you. Please line up.
Excuse me, while I try to read my own writing now. "Everyone has said or done something that causes you to shake your head. Everyone on this council has said things that a percentage, large or small, of our population has considered to be an embarrassment to the city. Many citizens have spoken out, both on social media and written, expressing these concerns. I will tell you from my professional experience that Jean's response to the deputy during the traffic stop is not a great strategy for getting out of a, a ticket. Just, you know, I'm just saying. "Jean's behavior was unacceptable. The major difference between Jean's incident and a prior, and prior unacceptable acts by other council members is that Jean has made a public apology for his actions. I'm sure the public would welcome an apology from council, a council member or any elected official when they make mistakes. In regards, as the mentioned leaked email, I would, leaked, I'm sorry, leaked screenshot of an email, I'd remind the public that the source of this screenshot email was a gentleman. The gentleman released it was an operative who was paid for his services. He openly brags that he is the puppet master who gets candidates elected or not elected by providing ads which consistently contain unsubstantiated, there I go, deceptive narratives." And by the way, this individual is a plaintiff in a lawsuit filed against Jean. "In respect to the, in the respect, removal of Jean as mayor pro temp, it seems that there's a precedence that's already been set. Recently, a sitting mayor pro temp was deemed to have varied from council policy to the point that they were censured. This was done with no discussion in regards to removing that council person as mayor pro temp. I would remind everyone that Jean's incident did not involve any council or city business, as did the previously mentioned censure incident. Jean's embarrassment will be suffered personally. No other council members or city staff will suffer any personal consequences from this incident." During the above men. During the above-mentioned censure incident, it was brought to light that the city did not have a formal process to address any missteps by a council member. I have to agree that it is imperative that the city draft and adopt a written procedure addressing these issues, especially due to the fact that it only takes two council members to agendize such actions. I would ask that the council address the issue by adopting a formal policy before deliberating on any matter regarding a council member's behavior. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Ward, council, staff officers. My name is Dee Coleman. I live here in San Clemente. I also have a business here as well. I've been here for a number of years. I was a candidate for city council where you guys are now. Some of you may remember me. I respect your position where you are. It's a hard-fought spot to get, and there's a lot of hard decisions that have to be made. And when I ran for city council, I had a chance to meet a lot of political figures all over the place. And I remember Eric Garcetti said, "Oh, San Clemente, oh, that's such a great place." I met a federal judge, and he said, "Oh, I had such a great time when I was in San Clemente." You know, all these people have this great picture of San Clemente and how beautiful and wonderful it is, and they have good memories about it. And I moved here because when I was a kid, I loved it here, and I wanted to be here. But when I ran for city council, I, I experienced a lot of issues that came up with Jean James' name. And I experienced some of the issues that are being taught about or talked about tonight with Jean James. I read it in the paper with this issue with the, with the litigation that's going on. And then I read the issue with Mr. Novak. So I can't see a person that sits on this council, they're a public servant. I expect a high bar for them and expect that our city is represented in. I expect a high bar for them, and expect that our city is represented in a, in a fashion that's top-tier. So, I experienced with Gene James on two occasions, his behavior that was unbecoming of a person in his position while running for city council. Gene threatened me outside the chambers one evening, and he was hostile and very violent towards me. He also threatened to sue me while I was sitting for a, for a forum at the Mobile Home Park prior to the election, and getting, saying that you're going to sue you when I have a great relationship with all the other candidates was kind of unfathomable, and why would he even be doing that? So, it's uncharacteristic of someone being the title of mayor pro tem or even a possible mayor. Gene is involved with lawsuits that want to entangle the city based on these actions that have no business for San Clemente or its people. I don't think the city should be footing Gene's legal bills or his negligence or affiliations. Our city deserves a better person. This, that being said, this council has enormous power in our city, and I hope you use that power for the good of San Clemente tonight. I'm sure you know Gene James has anger management issues. James, I think you even know you have anger management issues, but ultimately, our city deserves a much better quality of representation, and I ask that Gene James be voted off as mayor pro tem based on these experienced firsthand unacceptable behaviors, and I hope the other alternating people on the council will take that to heed. And there were other people that I even talked to that also would like to speak out for Gene's actions, but I'm here in person to do it.
Ford Bauer, followed by Louise Herbert, followed by Sherri Grace.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bauer?
Good evening again. I remember hearing Gene the first time that he spoke at council because I was there first as well. I was the, that was the first time I spoke as well. And it was very heartfelt, and he was talking about his neighborhood and the neighbors, and he was talking about the, the dead rats that were being thrown over his yard, and the altercations that he had to deal with on almost a daily basis with the sober living home. And you know what he did? He went to code compliance, and he loaded up complaints. And he didn't hit anybody. He didn't threaten anybody. He went to code compliance. He worked it out on a daily basis, putting the complaints in until the house went away. And we had a sober home right up the street from us, and to have three kids and have a sober home up there where at six o'clock in the morning, you'll have the sheriffs going up because they have a knife fight, is something that I hope none of you have to deal with. It's, it's terrible. The sober home left, and four families moved in, and it's been heaven. And the kids run from house to house and pool to pool, and they all enjoy each other, even during COVID. Don't tell anybody. But I saw the last meeting online, and I think some things were missed. I'd like to bring up some, some points regarding last week's meeting. And I heard from Gene that there are four sheriff slots that are contracted but are still not filled, and this seems to happen every year. What his idea was, was to talk to the sheriff and say, "Let's convert one of those officers that is not here into customer service officers. We'll get four of them for one, and since we don't have any officers, it'd be a great thing to do." It never happened because Manhart didn't want it to happen. So, is this sheriff shortage on purpose? That's what I'd like to know. Sheriff Manhart was livid at the suggestion of swapping services, and he wouldn't even meet with Gene James. I would like to know if this was Manhart alone or if this is the policy of OCSD as a whole. Have any of you asked this? Because this is important to the residents. It's not important to the political circus that's going on right now. That's what I'd like to find out about. Also, I mean, we have the, we have the sheriffs in the city hall now. We have them in a much nicer place and a much safer place than they've been before. I'm hoping that the relationship is also better. Is this true or is this not true? Otherwise, we need some work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Herbert, and then Ms. Grace?
Hello, I'm Louise Herbert, a resident of San Clemente for over 38 years. I'd like to start with discussing your actions, Mayor Pro Tem, and directly to you. As you well know, we have not seen eye to eye too often, excluding last chamber, and that was unusual. But after that meeting, when I went home and saw and listened rather to the recording of your incidents with the OC sheriff, I was sad, I was mad, I was appalled, I was embarrassed, I was humiliated for you and our town. Your past actions on many occasions have fallen into all of those feelings, and it's a very bad reflection upon yourself and upon our town, just, not just locally, but widespreadly. On the flip side of that, I do not believe that any one council member or any person with a job here has the right to be run off or dismissed for their position just due to loud voices that can bang the drum louder without due process. We are not a kangaroo court, and I do believe in process and the ability to be able to function with a legal matter, a process that gives everybody the right to speak, and not just a kangaroo court or a lynching mob. Do keep in mind that I still am very appalled with your actions, very. I would ask and request that you make a public apology to the OC sheriff, that you make the same apology to the department, that you make the apology to your co-council members and people you have to work with so that we can get work done in this town. I ask that you do this with honesty, truth, and recognize what you've done wrong and own it, because it's really for the betterment and the health of our community that you do so. And I really, really ask you to seek that within yourself and deliver it back to the people who put you in that seat, and those of us who didn't, but still have to live with the results of our council. Thank you.
After Sherri Grace will be Donna the Dream, Rosemary Salas, and Craig Cassijian.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Ward, council members. So, I've never spoken in person before at a council meeting, but this is, this is really important to me, and, and it means a lot to come here to support Gene. I'm speaking in support of him, and I want him to retain his title as mayor pro tem of San Clemente. He's one of the hardest-working council members that we have. He's always available when me and my neighbors have needed to call him. He's, he's, he's been there for us. He's followed through. He responds quickly. And I believe he's doing the job that I voted for him to do, and he's doing an excellent job for our city. Everyone has personal issues. Everyone has things in their past, things in their presence that I, I really don't care about. I do care about the city, and I do care about what happens in the city, and I do care about the decisions that are made to make our city great. I know the council's aware of his accomplishments, so I'm not going to go into them in detail, but I will also say that, you know, everyone here has been, as Rick said, you know, involved in some kind of scandal or drama, and we're not asking you to, you know, remove you from your title or remove you from your seat or anything like that, because what really is of concern of us is how the city is ran, and that's, that's important to me. So, voting to remove Gene's title because of some petty games being played by a few radical loudmouth citizens only opens you up to the same games, because they won't stop at Gene to get what they want. You know, there's, there's an agenda here, and they'll keep going after everyone, and this is not beneficial for our city. The decision should be based on accomplishments in regards to the city, not petty grievances. And San Clemente is becoming somewhat of a laughingstock. I mean, I see it on Twitter. I see it on social media, and it's, you know, it's really not good. So, it's a sad time when our media can report things in a biased way, and, you know, removing Gene opens up other council members for the same type of thing, and I don't think that's fair. And also, I want to say that I'm extremely embarrassed by Mr. Knoblock's claim about Gene and his unrelenting desire to alert the media. So, I don't know what his ultimate goal is. Maybe he wants to be mayor pro tem. Maybe he wants to run for council again, but please don't reward him for contributing to this drama. And what he did is actually making a mockery of the real victims of abuse and of assault. So, in conclusion, no matter what the city council decides, I will respect that, but I, along with the majority of the voters in San Clemente, will continue to strongly support Gene as we did in the past two elections. Thank you.
After Ms. Jean is Rosemary Salas.
I 100% agree with Councilman Knoblock in his statement at last council meeting. The mayor pro tem's actions reflect poorly on this body, our community at large, and especially on our young people whom we train to show courtesy and respect for our police officers. San Clemente is better than that. It is not fitting that an individual with this attitude or lack of decorum should serve in one of our city's highest positions. He does not have the temperament to be a fair representative of the people of San Clemente. He has denigrated our homeless population as vagrants. Most have connections to San Clemente, and they live here. He has forgotten that he is a public servant of these people. He was improper to assert the mayor of Vencenita should not have come to San Clemente. He was out of line. Catherine Blakespear is a candidate for state office, and she was invited to speak in San Clemente. He embarrassed the city during a traffic stop. He attempted to abuse his position. This behavior of bullying, intimidation, and belittling should not be tolerated. All of you on council have witnessed his misbehavior. He is unsuitable as mayor pro tem. Vote to remove Mayor Pro Tem James from the office of Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you.
Rosemary Salas, followed by Craig Cassijian, followed by Wendy Schroed, followed by Wayne Eggleston.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I normally don't speak at these meetings, but I have had enough. I am so tired of the games being played. San Clemente City Council is getting to be like a reality show, and we, the residents, do deserve better. I am here in support of Gene James. Is he perfect? No, but none of you are either, either. And I'm sure every one of you have done things that you wish you could take back. With that said, Gene is a good man. He's a loving husband. He's served our country. He really cares about this city. He spends endless hours working hard for this city, and he does what is best for our city. Please, let's put a stop to all these conspiracies that are going around. Let's stop the lawsuits. Let's stop the police reports. Let's stop the calls into the media, and let's, the assault charges, the fake email accounts that we have, and the spreading of false information. San Clemente has many issues facing the city right now, and we need all council members working together, doing what is best for the city. We don't need you plotting against each other for personal vendettas. San Clemente deserves better than this. We, the residents, deserve better than this. Let's get back to being the best city in the world, and let's end the drama. Please vote to keep Gene as mayor pro tem. Thank you.
Craig Cassijian?
I grew up here 50 years ago, and I went from San Clemente High School to the White House, back to sort two US presidents, and I've been around politics for 40 years. And for full disclosure, yes, I did consult to Gene, to Gene James on his last two campaigns. And I will say this, he is brusque. He could be, he could be direct. He could even be indiscreet at times, but he's always been unfailingly honest. And something else, he's rolled up a lot of votes, a lot more votes than many of you have. And it pains me, it absolutely pains me to see San Clemente evolve into a cancel culture-like circus when you have so many outstanding problems to solve. And Gene's been at the tip of the spear along with many of you to address those problems head-on, and I appreciate that, as do a lot of the voters who voted him in to office twice. With that said, grudge matches, I get. Personal disagreements, I understand. But you take, you take those grudges and those personal disagreements and sort them out. Do not turn them into political tinder, and that's what's happened here. And I think it's really sad to see that unfold before my very eyes in the city of Chicago. So, I urge you, I beckon you, do not let city, the city of San Clemente, evolve into a cancel culture-like circus we see across the nation unfolding before our very eyes. It's too precious of a place. You have much bigger agenda items to address, and it's time to move on. And if you guys don't like him, impeach him. Vote him out, but you voted him in. So, let the guy do his work. And if you don't like that, an election's coming right up. So, I'm going to end on that note. Thank you very much.
Wendy Schroed?
Tonight, hundreds of parents went up to the CUSD parking lot, and they're organizing because they just recently learned that the governor of the state's going to force their children to get a vaccination that they don't want their kids to get. There are renters in our town right now who, the eviction moratorium has expired, and they don't have the money because they have lost their jobs during the pandemic to keep a roof over their head. We have businesses in town that have closed. We all know this, and then they're not going to open anymore. For the last year and a half, the citizens of San Clemente have had to deal with all of these terrible things, and yet we have this minority, and it really is a tiny minority in town, who are on a perpetual political campaign. They're unhappy with the fact that Gene got elected. In full disclosure, I worked on Gene's campaign. Gene paid me $500 a month for two months to do his tech work and to manage his volunteers. I know that's going to show up on social media tomorrow, so I want to get ahead of it. We need you guys to stop campaigning, not all of you, of course. We need you to just serve the citizens of San Clemente. I thank you for being up here and, and being a service to us. But this is imperative right now that we stop. No more social media, no more trying to figure out who's going to run, no more, you know, what did the political consultant tell us to do? We need you to just concentrate on us. Gene is doing the job of a council member. He puts in a ton of hours. I've never contacted Gene and not gotten almost immediate response. I'm happy with his performance as a council member. I don't care about his personal life. The kind of harassment, the kind of cancel culture that Craig mentioned is now permeating out to the volunteer committees. On social media, I'm watching our volunteer committee members get harassed. It needs to stop. So, please, let's keep Gene in his position, and let's get back to serving the sitting citizens of San Clemente. Thank you all for being up there for us.
Wayne Eggleston, followed by BRM?
Good evening. I hesitated to come this evening, but I decided I really had to because there's such a division on city council and in city council meetings. And I'm not here to support any council member this evening, but I wanted to share with you when I was in the city council for 12 years, that I can't recall a time when any of us spoke and criticized another council member from the diocese. Maybe we did, but I don't remember. I was on the council with Joe Anderson, Lori Doncheck, Jim Dahl, and for a time with, with Steve when he was there for two years. And there's no more- And there's no more difference of opinion that I have with Jim Dahl. But today, we're friendly. We are cooperating on a community project right now. But at the council meetings, we probably didn't agree on anything. But that doesn't make a difference because we still are friends. I know each and every one of you. I've known Kathy. Kathy's been instrumental in stopping the toll road. I know Chris Duncan. He seems to be very middle-of-the-road and moderate. I know Laura. Laura, thank you for all the help you did for us at Heritage of San Clemente, the Marine Monument for our publicity. Thank you very much. And I know Steve. Steve, I served on the city council and he was on the city council for two years. And I know Jean. Jean made a mistake. He apologized for it. He said it was not his best performance. He regretted it and he apologized for it. So what's the solution? The solution really is respect, compassion, forgiveness, and turning the other cheek. Who tonight amongst you will stand up and shake the hands of other council members? And do that tonight? Because we need unity on this city council. You know, I was at the homecoming parade and one of the cheerleaders had a sign. And the sign said, "When we stick together, we are one team." When we stick together, we are one team. Perhaps we can learn something from our high school students. Thank you.
Is that the last public comment? This one is.
I want to thank Wayne and I want to thank everybody that spoke on both sides. I want to read, I want to say, where were these people though, when they censured a city council member brutally for six hours? And I didn't hear one of those people defend that we shouldn't be going after that council member. I want to read what council member James said on July 17th. He said, "We are not teammates. We don't have to be friends, but we need to be colleagues. We do need to be able to do business of the city with respect and dignity. We need to represent the city. We need to be as good as the citizens of the city. We need to be as great as the city is great. And I just feel sometimes we are falling down on this. For my transgressions, when I am not being professional, I apologize. And I just ask that we set all our passive-aggressive comments aside and just do the business of the city." I agree. Obviously, he does. Why are we here tonight? We're not here to remove Jean. I probably agree with him 80 to 90% of the time. This isn't about the politics. So people say it's about politics. This isn't about politics. It's about what Jean said. It's about the image we give to our children, which is the city that we're raising. It's about the image that our council members, respectful council members, should be giving to the citizens, as Jean said. Apologies don't work for me. If I have a seven-year-old and they apologize, they say, "Thank you for the apology. Now you're still being punished." And this isn't about punishment. In my view, for whatever it's worth, I think we should remove Jean from his position. That's a slap on the wrist and put Chris into that position. I think it just makes too much sense. It's not a punishment. I think Jean should go on and do the great job he's doing. He's spending hundreds of hours a month on his service and he's doing a great job. That's not what we're here about. The statement, "Honest, excuses, personal issues, council culture," I don't know where that came from, from a political analyst. This isn't about cancel culture. Nobody's asking for him to be removed or resign. This is about what we do, is we're supposed to be respectful. Everybody's talked about the items that have happened. I have no problem with Jean and I think he should continue as council member. But I do have a problem with him being the Mayor Pro Tem at this point. And I think that that's council decision. It's going to go three to two in favor of him retaining that position. But it's a mistake. Just as tonight, when council didn't move this item up, in 27 years, I have never known a time when a request to move of an item was ever denied. This is a political act. People are saying this shouldn't be political. This whole thing has been a political act. I hope this council stops being political, stops attacking. But these attacks are going on from the side that supports Jean in social media daily. So everybody should cut it out. Let's stick with issues. And I hope the council takes the right action tonight, whatever it is.
That's all. Is that the comment? Okay. All right. So no more public comment and we're at discussion by the council. You agendized this.
Yes, I agendized it because I was very concerned about the conduct of one of my colleagues on the council. Very concerned. I brought this up sadly, regretfully. It was no pleasure. It was no political minority play to accomplish some political act. I was concerned about my colleague's comment. About a month ago, I brought up to my colleagues on the council another concern that I had. This council, without city council approval, issued a press release where the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem accused other elected officials around the county, the board members and staff of the TCA, of felonies, of bribery, conspiracies. These are felonies. They were accused of doing this in a press release. I brought it up. And I encourage my colleagues to exercise decorum, demeanor, and be circumspect with our public comments so that we don't embarrass our city or generate yet another defamation lawsuit. Now, I know that from the dais, we all get executive privilege. We can't be sued for defamation while we're sitting here as an elected official. But the day after, when you come on Facebook and start saying, "I'm going to name names about who those criminals were, and I'm going to start naming elected officials from Newport Beach, Lake Forest, Yorba Linda, on and on." I think that's appropriate and I chastised, I didn't chastise, I encouraged our council members to be circumspect. Mayor Ward said, "I received that comment and I appreciated that." Mayor Pro Tem responded differently. When I heard the comments, the TV comments about the traffic stop, I heard it was a three or four-minute abbreviated version. And I said, "That can't quite be right." I got the full 11-minute version, listened to it from beginning to end. And quite frankly, I was appalled. I was embarrassed. I was ashamed for our city. I was embarrassed for the police officer that had to tolerate being called GD this and effing that twice and GD twice. And then accused of malicious conduct, of misusing their public office to pick on this poor guy. And I was just appalled by it. After seven or eight people came to the podium saying, "This is inappropriate conduct. Something should be occurred." I asked if there was any comments by the Mayor Pro Tem and he had no comments. So I made the motion because I think someone leading this city, and this is not political, I vote with Jean more times probably than anyone else on the council. But the conduct that I heard was offensive. It gives a poor representation of our city. It's a sad thing and I regretted doing it and I said so at the time. This is embarrassment to our city to even have to have these conversations. But hopefully, the Mayor Pro Tem will respond accordingly. Now, I haven't heard a public apology. I read in the paper, an interview that occurred moments after the item was placed on the agenda. I heard that he apologized. I hadn't heard that before, hadn't heard it from anybody anywhere. So here we are. Now regarding the conduct, continue with the conduct of my colleague. After that meeting was placed on the agenda, I came back to my podium and I was greeted with a response with lips curled, face red, snarling, "I want to talk to you right now on the other room." My response was, "Jean, what do you have to say? If you have something to say, say it." And he continued to try to make excuses. "You don't understand what happened at that police stop." At first, I heard it was, there was some sort of collusion with Captain Manhart and whoever at the sheriff's department to pick on him. Then I heard it was, his comments were not based on that, but based on some high blood pressure and he couldn't control himself. Well, you know, if you have a high blood pressure problem and you can't control your conduct, maybe there should be another role for you in the community. My concern, and I'll summarize my comments with this. My concern is that the comments that I heard were highly offensive. They're bad for the city. They give a poor representation to the, to our youth. And the sheriff's department doesn't need to be maligned that way. And I had unfortunate, was put in an unfortunate position to have to agendize this matter. But I thought it was appropriate. And I'm hoping to hear some of the comments from my colleague. Maybe I will, maybe I won't. But that's why I brought it up, Mayor.
And Mayor Ward, I seconded the motion to agendize this tonight. So I'd like to share some of my own comments. And please, I appreciate it if I'm not interrupted, which I am on a regular basis by you. So I'd like to ask in advance, please not interrupt me. We have no time limits as council members. I heard a couple of speakers tonight mention the censure hearing that took place in November of last year in the peak of COVID, which two members here on this council held us kangaroo court. I heard that tonight too, for six hours to censure me and spent over $23,000 on lawyers to do that to me. So tonight, it's not costing us anything. And I'm going to move forward and hopefully this is the last time we have to address something like this. Two of these members tonight did agendize to take my Mayor Pro Tem title away last year as well. So that did happen to me. This isn't retaliation, my comments tonight. This is just the truth and I pretty much had it with his behavior. And I'm going to share why. FBI, Mayor Pro Tem James went undercover and wore a wire. Mayor Pro Tem James told city council members this was just about a week after informing members of the public, who already told me about that, when he told the council, "Sorry, I knew about it." But it wasn't confidential because it's off agenda. Things in closed session that are shared that are off agenda are not confidential. He told us he wore a wire to audio-record his meeting with a rival council member from Rancho Santa Margarita named Tony Gill. And again, he told members of the public about this just this summer, July 27th, after a council meeting, which Mayor Pro Tem James and Mayor Ward and Councilmember Duncan were present at a restaurant. I do not believe the FBI approached Mayor Pro Tem James. I'll never know. But in my opinion, this is an example of him using a story to intimidate people. The traffic stop with Deputy Medina was nothing but professional. I'm just so impressed at his ability to remain composed during that, being yelled at with obscenities. When stopped, the first thing Mayor Pro Tem James did was to accuse the deputy of a criminal conspiracy to manufacture evidence for the purpose of issuing a traffic citation. Deputy Medina denied this and Mayor Pro Tem James continued to accuse him of engaging in an act of conspiracy. Mayor Pro Tem James demanded that the deputy summon the chief and sergeant using the F-word and the deputy did not do so. Then Mayor Pro Tem James hissed by saying, "You're such a big shot." And the deputy, as you've heard from some speakers tonight, could have been severely injured or even killed, had the car behind him after Mayor Pro Tem James slammed on the brakes, didn't slam on their brakes. So thank God, he wasn't injured. And he continued to handle himself with that most professionalism and didn't take any actions against Mayor Pro Tem James regarding that. Steve No Block, House Member No Block. While the police report after the last council meeting on September 28th, where he was allegedly assaulted by Mayor Pro Tem James because of this motion tonight that was placed on the agenda. So that was most unfortunate. And again, thank God, nothing more severe happened as a result. But Mayor Pro Tem Jean James did that after the meeting was adjourned. So few people were around and I was at home participating, so I didn't see it either. And let's see, as you saw in the newspapers, very quickly, there were newspaper articles about this in the Voice of OC and the San Clemente Times, that Councilmember No Block had said, after most of the public had left, this was on September 28th, the council chambers, James came over to him and wanted to speak. After the meeting, he came over to me with his lips curled, growling angrily, saying, "I want to talk to you now," No Block said in a Wednesday phone call with the Voice of OC. "I said you brought this on yourself. I turned around and he pulled my arm to turn me back around and I told him to keep his hands to himself and never touch me again." And James declined to comment on the argument after the meeting, saying he wouldn't speak on the issue publicly until he talked with the sheriff's department. Then there's the issue pertaining to a comment tonight. Somebody who does dress in drag and performs and him threatening to kick his ass. And among other things, I won't be repeating that, but another speaker tonight said that he was threatened by Mayor Pro Tem James when he ran for office against him. And most unfortunate and disturbing pattern. And then just other incidents of intimidating and bullying, just unacceptable behavior. Slander of me to three reporters, calling me abusive to employees, past and present, when this is a flat-out lie. Saying there's multiple employees filing multiple complaints against me, which is another flat-out lie. So he slandered me and three newspapers published his comment. Devulging of closed-session information about investigation about one employee complaint that Mr. Sunset was made against me, which my due process rights were violated because to this day, I've never seen the report and I've never been told what it is I did. He divulged information from investigator, information he gleaned from the investigator with the attorney present in closed session, that this investigator tried to contact me six times. I did end up meeting with that investigator and I learned nothing. Mayor Pro Tem Jean James continues to drain taxpayer dollars to support the city manager and city attorney's pursuit since last July 2020. And I learned about it about seven months later. To pursue insurance coverage, we're with a joint powers insurance authority. And for his private defamation lawsuit against him by a citizen of San Clemente. And the insurance company denied the claim so far three times and it's going to go to arbitration soon. I don't know the date, but that will cost more money for the taxpayers. In total, between everything from last July to now, it's estimated about $50,000. He's told a citizen taxpayer advocate, who's also a homeowner and parent in San Clemente, raised her kids here, graduated from San Clemente High School, that she's mentally ill and stopped writing him because he didn't agree with what she had to say. We can just choose as council members and leaders to just ignore people and we don't need to name call. He wrote to members of the former Human Affairs Committee, who were wonderful, dedicated women. They're no longer on the Human Affairs Committee, but very upstanding leaders of the community who volunteer for multiple organizations, calling them out for speaking out at a budget workshop. Because for the second year in a row, the city manager removed the general fund social service monies, which were about $54,000. And he wasn't happy with them speaking out about that at the meeting. So I'm paraphrasing, but he chastised them for speaking out, basically saying they're not helping their cause and then just threatening to withhold money for social services. Some paraphrasing again. Because Councilmember No Block and I recused from closed-session discussion on April 2021 this year, pertaining to his personal lawsuit, we didn't participate in discussing the coverage, seeking coverage again from the insurance company. He called us, he yelled at us and called us effing monsters. In summary, Mayor Pro Tem James's actions on this council have been unethical, in my opinion. He's attempted to have a motor cop crash for merely having the audacity to pull him over when he ran a red light, calling for the chief of police, using his title to influence that. Claimed again, this is summary, claimed the secret agent for the FBI in recording. Another council member. And then now allegedly assaulting another fellow council member. And a police report having to be filed. So the list goes on and on. But at the very least, I believe that Mayor Pro Tem James should step down from the Mayor Pro Tem leadership role on this council. And even further, I think he should resign. Thank you.
I'd like to go. Yeah, so we've heard from both the council members who asked for this to be agendized. I personally thought this was something that was private, that shouldn't come to the council level, but you did agendize it. So, you know, we have to consider it. You've heard public comment. I heard some sounded like some backing off of what was said last week. But I'm going to talk about, and I'm disappointed to hear some of what I heard tonight in a response, because I think it doesn't reflect what the public is asking us to do. Last week, you know, I was disappointed to hear that this was agendized, but it was after hearing public comments where the public stated things that did not happen in that traffic stop. And I'm only going to consider what I heard. There was words, get your superior down here right now. That was not said, but that was said in public comment of why this should be agendized. There was comments that he demanded that, that he ordered that another officer come. And what I was sorry to hear is that you made the comment that he was using his position and ordered him to come. Maybe that's, you said you didn't hear it all, but then you said you listened to it. But you also made the same comment that he ordered it. The tape doesn't reflect that. It, it just, it doesn't. Those words were never spoken. I heard, can I ask for? That is not making a demand. It certainly isn't get your superior down here right now. Asking for another officer to come to a traffic stop or any type of situation is something that any, any public can do, any person can do. If you feel uncomfortable, you can ask for an officer, another officer to come. And I don't want anyone to ever think that you can't do that because you have the right to ask. And that's what I heard on the tape. So I'm disappointed that it came to this. I can see why people are saying that it reflects things that we see in the, in the paper. And I am very not happy with the newspapers that we have that are, are printing this. It's things that are not news. We have things that we are working on at any given day that are so important to our residents, such as the toll road. We now have possible oil spill that hopefully does not reach San Clemente. And we have other, we have other items that are very important. And I happen to know that the Mayor Pro Tem is actively working on those. And he has served well this city and these residents for the past year. Things were brought up since it was agendized, only last week, that are even more inflammatory. I've heard those comments before, they're, they're nothing new and they were done at a time of an election. And the people elected him. So those are, those are done and passed. The fact that he talked to the newspaper and finally answered this because of all the commotion that people were making out of it. You know, it's, it's done. It's not something that I'm going to consider. And I'm going to ask the residents to please understand and trust me that I'm going to try to make the best decision for the residents and for the city council and the city. And I'm going to listen to the facts, not rhetoric, not inflammatory comments, and certainly not things that were not said that people want me to consider. And I hope that you would understand that I would do the same for you and that I don't hold any comments that anyone makes at the podium against any issue. I always consider all of the facts. So I'm not going to do that. I think it was an unfortunate traffic stop. It didn't go well and, but I'm not going to fault anyone for that. I think it's between them. And I'm certainly not going to take action to remove someone from an office that they've been serving on. And I know the work that they have done. I'm disappointed in it. I, I would like the comments to stop. And I agree with what people are saying that what truly is important in San Clemente is not what we're seeing. And this has taken up way too much time. I disagree with comments by Councilmember Ferguson that she was attacked. And we didn't go after her for six hours. I think when I made a case for censure, I think it was 22 minutes, something like that. That was the entire case. The rest of it was her attorneys, because she didn't speak on it. It was her attorneys talking on that. So it's not the same thing. This isn't the same thing. I heard a lot of self-serving comments tonight and it's unfortunate. But we need to do the business of the city and this, I don't think this is it. So I'm not going to be supportive of it. But those are my comments and, and I would ask council, I mean, I want us to be better and, and work together. But I haven't heard that from some of my colleagues. I appreciate some of what you said tonight. I do, but we need to move on and be better. I'm, I'm trying. You know, I'm running these meetings and I am trying to respect every single person in this room. And I hope that council would appreciate the fact that I run these meetings and that I have to across an entire room, handle every single person that's talking this while you just have to concentrate on what you want to say and do and what you need to vote on. And I was willing to do that and step up to do that this year during, during this time. No, I didn't interrupt you and your comments.
I thought you were wrapping up.
At this time, no, no, no.
Please come back.
So that's going to be my comment. I don't personally think, and I said it before, that Councilmember James needs to comment on anything. He doesn't need to ask or, or answer any questions. That's not what we do from the dais. You all got your comments out today. And I suppose that's what was coming, but I wanted to offer that to you, that you do not have to, that it's up to you.
I have some comments, do you want to go first?
She can come back to me. I'm fine with her coming back to me, but I'm allowed to speak as many times as I'd like. We don't have a limit, but you can come back to me. Thank you.
Okay, then I'll, I'll give my comments. I'm very sad right now that our council has come to this. We've now spent most of the time at the meeting on something that's not city business. That's not the pressing issues before our city that the, that the residents elected us to help solve. That's very sad and I hope it never happens again. I don't condone Mayor Pro Tem James' actions with the deputy. I think it was a huge mistake. I think it's unacceptable and regrettable. Doesn't reflect well on the city. I agree with all that. But that was done in Jean's private life. There's a lot of things I've done in my private life, I hope don't get announced here. And actually, they actually frequently do get announced. If you followed meetings, you know, and I don't think that's productive. I think we, people should look at how we vote, what we do on the dais for the city. That's where you should focus. Actually, I, I disagree with Jean a lot of times, probably much more than you, Steve. But what I agree with Jean on is our love for this city. Our love for San Clemente and our absolute commitment to make every decision we can to protect the city. To ensure that the city stays the Spanish village policy and isn't changed. And I'm 100% confident that Jean makes those votes with that interested mind. There will be times where we have personal issues with each other. Those should be handled in private. We owe the residents the time on the dais on city issues. We need to deal with those other issues in private. We can come to each other and express those concerns and hopefully work them out. If there is a charge of wrongdoing, it should be dealt with a pro, through a process. I'm an attorney, I like process. This isn't a process, this is an ambush. There's been all kinds of comments that came out and the comments we received by email and has spoken tonight, that didn't even come out until just after it was agendized. It's like a star chamber. Someone's supposed to defend themselves against things that are just being introduced right before they have to, to defend themselves, not how you run it. You know, you want to, you think a council member committed some misconduct, there's a process called censure. We've had some experience in this city. Censure is where you meet with the city attorney. You go over what you think the conduct is. Does it rise to the level where you should censure someone? Write it up, it gets presented, they get a chance to know ahead of time what's coming at them and defend themselves. That happened. That's, if people think that this rises to that, that, that should have been what they do. This is, this is, this ad hoc proceeding is completely unproductive. And it's not fair. Regardless of how bad Jean acted in that incident or other incidents. It's just not how we do things. If you want to sanction a council member, there needs to be a process. Evidence is presented and they get a chance to respond. That's not what's going on here. So I know that no matter how I vote on this, I'm going to disappoint a large contingent of people. Nothing new in San Clemente on that. And I just hope we, I, I hope we do close this chapter. We, 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 we vote amongst ourselves to have some, have a council member have different titles. If we might go every other meeting with two disappointed council members agendizing and trying to take away a title from someone, we'll be doing that every week. That's a slippery slope. We shouldn't be doing that. We should be talking about the city's business. And so I don't want to go down that road. You know, we got a chance to, to give someone a different title the next year when we vote for that stuff. The voters get a chance to vote every two years for the, the council members they want or don't want. And if they need, they feel the need, they can, there's other processes for them. So, you know, I just don't like how this was done. I think we owe it to the residents of this town to not act this way, to not have these sideshows interrupt our proceedings, to not be in an embarrassment that people write about in other places, to be known as a council that actually gets things done for our city. Let's get to that. And I, I, I know all these folks on the council and I feel like I could go to them with anything. That's how we need to be, even if we disagree. Right, but we shouldn't be having these public discussions of things we disagree with people's conduct up here at the dais. So, you know, that, that's where I stand. I know that that'll disappoint some people and I, I'm sure I'll take hits from certain places, but I'm totally comfortable with it because I want to get things done for the city and this isn't that. Thank you.
So before we hear any other comment, I would like to agendize that we do not take action to remove Mayor Pro Tem James from the office of Mayor Pro Tem.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion, that's what I said.
I made a motion, I make a substitute motion. Okay, is there a second to that motion?
What is the motion, the second?
My substitute motion?
Wait, wait. First of all.
Substitute motion. You can, but we, let's.
I will second Mayor Ward's motion first.
Okay, so there's a motion, a second and a substitute motion.
My substitute motion is to remove Mayor Pro Tem Jean James's title.
So I believe we have to take the substitute motion first.
Correct.
Is there any other council comment?
I do, but I, but I'll go last.
No, I want you to make it now before we.
I'd like to, because when you say things, you know, I, I need to clarify some of the things you say sometimes. So first, I want to thank you for not interrupting me. That was very refreshing, I never get that. And secondly, since you did raise the censure, I've heard, I was never going to raise that tonight. But since you raised that censure hearing about how my lawyers spoke, well, when my lawyers asked, tried to ask you questions, you refused. So there were no, no communications from you with my lawyers. You refused to answer any questions, but you made your statement because you led that whole kangaroo court censure and your lawyers were paid by the taxpayers and mine were not. So I wanted to make those points and it did go on for six hours. All right, so Madam Clerk.
May I make him?
Yes, you can, it's your choice.
The most profound statement this evening was made by Ms. Herbert. She said she was angry. I accept that. I was disappointed in myself, angered at myself. I'm an imperfect individual. I will acknowledge that. You know, one day, rather than keeping a bad day to myself, I was completely inappropriate with deputy during a traffic stop. I'm not going to offer excuses for my behavior. I will once more offer an apology to the deputy, OCSD and to our city. I've had that conversation with Captain Benfield. I've had that confidential conversation with Captain Benfield. This was not going to be a conversation I was going to have in public. My offense is I made a right on a red less than five miles an hour. I rolled through a traffic. I did not fulfill my obligations as a leader that day. I can assure you, it will not occur again. Regarding this bizarre document that's floating around, there's no metadata. There's no email addresses. It, it's just, it, it just, it's looks to be photoshopped. And the reason why I would never make that, those kind of statements, I would have lost my job. I, I was sitting on two boards, I would have lost my seats on those boards. Those statements were made by a very angry individual or someone trying to pretend they're me. Being an angry individual. I don't even recall the email address ever existed. This was, this was vetted back in 2019. You know, I did not make those statements. Who this individual is, I've never spoke with them. I've, I've, I've never had any communication with them. And this is a cheap, cheap political stunt. This is the politics of personal destruction. Regarding Councilmembers No Block's allegation of assault last week. I did indeed touch Councilmember No Block on the upper arm, begin yelling it. You know, there were 10 or 12 people in the room at the time. No one saw an assault. You know, I'm not going to go any further into that. I think we need to work on repairing our relationship on this council. But assault is a serious allegation. When you make an allegation about someone who can, who can then be denied their freedom, can input, impact their employment, that's a serious allegation to make. We've gone through a year and a half of COVID. We went through COVID fear. Now I think we're in COVID fatigue. This council, the city, our families have been under stress. Let's take this evening in lessening that stress and begin working together. Let's look at what we have accomplished. We've put together a cooperative agreement. And it's these two guys right here, our city manager and city attorney, who did the yeoman's work there. And they get criticized as much as, as much as we, as much as any of us up here. You know, we navigated our city through a COVID pandemic. We've kept our revenues pretty much neutral. We built a new police station. That was, that was, that was my campaign promise. And that was the first thing I got accomplished sitting on council. Our finances are strong, our city is safe. Now we're, we're faced with one of our cherished neighborhoods actually falling into the ocean. And we're talking about this. We must support those homeowners down there. We can't go down there and, and politic and spread rumors. We must come up with a plan to pay off our $50 million unfunded obligation. And now we're faced with a potential environmental and economic disaster that could very possibly hit us within the next few days. The last I heard, there were droplets of oil falling up on Laguna Beach. It brings tears to my eyes to think about our wildlife, our birds, and what's going to happen to them. I am thankful that Chris brought to us a resolution to oppose new leases, new oil leases, offshore oil leases. And we voted on that. Four of us stood up with Chris, three of us stood up with Chris and said, we support you on that. That was Congressman Levin's thing. Everyone knows I never voted for Congressman Levin, Levin. But we do have a very cordial, cordial relationship. And I appreciate the fact that he did that. cordial relationship and I appreciate the fact that he did that. You know, we need to channel our resources, focus our energy on those matters, on those things that matter. Councilmember No Block, I offer my hand to you. I, I think we need to really sort out how we're going to move forward and put this thing together. That silly assault charge is not going anywhere. You know it. And I'm going to, once again, I'm going to turn the other cheek. Finally, going back to what Ms. Herbert said, that had a profound impact. And I want to thank everyone who came out and made comments, pro and con. And, and each one of those comments are extraordinarily important and I took them to the heart. I did not live up to my role as a leader that day. You know, you can do all the good you want to do. All the good that's possible to do, you can do. And eight or, eight or nine minutes of, of being frustrated. I took out my frustration on that deputy. On something that I won't even discuss here, met, you know, it's time for us to move on. And again, council member No Block, I think we need to figure out how to work together. And I, you know, I just, that's what I, that's my wish for this evening. Thank you for everyone who came out. Madam, may I call for the question?
Thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk.
Before the vote, I'd like to comment on the motion. I appreciate Jean, your comments. Uh, I, I like what Wayne Agleston said tonight when he talked about the need for contrition and moving forward. And there's two kinds of contrition. There's the kind of a contrition that says, I'm sorry I did it and I'll never do it again. This is kind of a contrition that says, I'm sorry I got caught and I may very well do it again. Your, your comments to I Jean, I appreciate them, but you said my, my total offense was going through the red light. That was not your offense. Your offense was your comments to the, to the officer. Now you've commented on them, but they are what they are.
Councilmember.
They are what they are. And regarding the, 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 the silly assault. When someone, when I turned my back to pick up my documents and you grabbed me by the shoulder and pulled me around in a rage, my yelling at you was to tell you to keep your hands off and don't ever touch me again. I don't appreciate it being, being, being downplayed as though it was nothing. He just tapped me on the shoulder, nonsense. You were, you were furious, you were in a rage. You pointed and said, get out of here. I want to talk to you right now. That's unacceptable conduct. For me, for any of our citizens or any of my colleagues, that's why I filed those charges. If the district attorney wants to prosecute you, that's their decision. But the facts are what they are.
I move for the question.
Alright, I, I agree. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Duncan.
What?
This is the substitute motion by Councilmember Ferguson, seconded by Councilmember No Block to remove Jean James' title of Mayor Protem.
No.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember No Block?
Yes.
Mayor Protem James?
No.
Mayor Ward? No. Motion carry fails two to three. So the original motion by Mayor Ward, seconded by Councilmember Duncan to not take action to remove Jean James' title of Mayor Protem.
Wait, I wonder, I think that's new.
It is, but I, because of the subject matter, I would like to hear that vote.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
No.
Councilmember No Block?
No.
Mayor Protem James?
Aye.
Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Carries three to.
Right. Madam Clerk, what is our next item?
Next item is oral communications part two, and I have two cards. Okay. Uh, the first is from Bill Crutenger.
Good evening again. I wanted to share with all of you and the public just some information about a countywide emergency communications exercise that took place over the weekend. The, eh, the organization that serves San Clemente is Tri-Cities RACIS. That's the Radio Emergency Civil Emergency Service. And, uh, there was a handful of different events that were tested. Sixty meter HF, uh, two meter local simplex nets and then communicating up to, uh, the county sheriff facility up at Loma Ridge. And then there were some, uh, of my favorite event, which was the new high-speed data network system evaluation. The test was useful. They gained a lot of great data on what local teams in the county volunteers are capable of. And I'm pleased to report that Tri-Cities RACIS executed perfectly all the tests that we signed up to do ahead of schedule. So it was a great success for our local volunteers.
Congratulations.
Next speaker is Rick Kleffler.
Just want to say, Bill Crutenger is a, is a treasure. He really helped us out with the Public Safety Committee. He's going to be an outstanding member of the Human Affairs Committee. I mean, politically, we don't agree on everything, you know, but I, I'm telling you, this guy is really, really has done, is going to do a lot of great stuff for the city. So I want to thank Bill for all of his, all his help. I want to say I'm also upset at the city manager that disco ball is still not on. And so I want to see that get corrected.
Sign up for a dance class.
This other part is, is just, I, I, I wanted to try to be constructive. I, you know, appreciate everything that was said and I appreciate the passion, but as a, like ex-investigator, I'm a little uncomfortable. I, from here on, maybe, maybe you could check with, with, with Captain Benfield and see. But as an investigator, I, I, I wouldn't be real thrilled about trying a case that I was investigating right now in, in, in public. You know, you know what I'm saying? I, I, you made your comments. Everybody's made comments about it, but, uh, you know, you're, you're, you're talking to a bunch of, the case got prosecuted, you, potential jurors here and whoever's hearing on, on YouTube and, and all that. So I don't think there's anything that hasn't been said that, you know, everybody knows at this point. But maybe that would just be my suggestion. Maybe we'll just let that case carry out and see, and the best of luck to everybody, you know, how it plays out. But I do, I do appreciate your, everybody's passion. And again, everybody that spoke, you know, it was, it was a tough night. And I've said this before at council meetings, and here I am saying again, I just hope we can come together, you know, and for, for the, the challenges that we have in the city. It's going to be very difficult, but yeah, actually, if you look at, take all the personal stuff out, you guys really have done a ton of constructive things for the city. I mean, when you take all the junk out of it, you really have. So at least if nothing else, I hope we can all continue to do that. Thanks a lot. Good evening.
City Manager.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, members of the city council, um, it's probably the most important thing I would like to update you tonight as it relates to the oil spill that occurred off the coast of Huntington Beach. And so um, I have Samantha Wiley, our beaches, park and recreation director, who has been tasked with having a seat at the Unified Command Center in Long Beach under the Coast Guard's direction of the cleanup response related to this project. Uh, one thing I want to take note of, if IT could quickly bring up our homepage, we have provided a link under latest news that drakes you directly to the official website of the cleanup efforts. Um, I'll give a moment for IT to bring that up really quickly, please. And it's coming up. It's coming up.
I don't want to bury the lead, but is there oil coming our way? How are we going to get to that?
So, I, yeah, so as of, well, first here on our website, you'll see we have Southern California Spill Response. If you go to that, it'll take you directly to the official federal website that has all of the information, resources and numbers that you can call as it relates to wildlife, et cetera. As of right now, the only oil that we have had identified is small traces of oil at the North Laguna Beach beaches of Shaw's Cove and Crescent Bay. Uh, we have a strike team, uh, via the Coast Guard that is doing patrols of Dana Point and San Clemente to identify if any oil is coming our way. As of today's patrols, there was no oil seen in San Clemente or Dana Point. However, Dana Point, the other county have taken protective measures to close the harbor as well as the county beaches and Dana Point has closed Baby Beach. With that, I'm going to let Samantha, who's really been kind of the feet on the ground with this, provide an update to the council and the public, please Samantha.
Yes, thank you, Eric. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Samantha Wiley with the, um, Beaches Parks and Recreation Department. I am here to report out that, um, San Clemente does not have oil on its beaches as of right now. Um, this morning, um, the SCAT team, which stands for the Shoreline Cleanup and Assessment Team, walked our beaches, um, every, every mile of them and surveyed our shoreline and our water lines and found no evidence of oil on San Clemente shores. Um, that's great news for us, um, and our community as well. Um, so that means our beaches remain open. Um, they are some of the only beaches and waters open in the area. Um, and our pier remains open for fishing and lobster season as well. And all of those activities have been, um, very busy. Um, so those are, those are good news details for us. Um, they will continue to do overflights, um, through the night and into tomorrow to, to continue to understand the spread of the oil um, and what that looks like. Um, they, I will share with council, the divers did check the line today and there were no active discharge, um, points from the damaged line. Um, additionally, just some numbers for, for the council and the public, um, they've collected 5,124 cumulative gallons of oil to date. Um, and again, that, uh, all of this information is available on that website, um, that Eric showed. That's socalspillresponse.com. Um, there is an email address. If anybody has any inquiries, it's inquiries@socalspillresponse.com. Um, so with that, I'm happy to take any questions from council if there are any. Um, and that would end my report.
Councilmember No Block.
Just a quick, a question. Uh, thank you for that update Samantha. You know, when, when, when the Valdez oil disaster in Alaska happened, was, it was terrible. Uh, one of the worst disasters in history, oil tanker disasters. What they found, what was interesting was the, the amount of, of, of how frequently the oil dissipated uh, in, in the, in the ocean. Uh, this, this plume, this blob, if you will, is still what, three, four miles out to shore. Are they estimating, do you know Samantha, if they're estimating the time which it would take that, that, that bloom, if you will, to, uh, to dissipate?
Sure. That's a great question. Um, you know, my, my, in, my insight and my experience today at the Unified Command Center says that they're not really prepared to provide that detail. Um, they obviously had a very unexpected storm last night. Um, so there just seems to be a lot of, um, unexpected conditions that are getting thrown into this mix. Um, so what I've come to learn is they are stressing the importance of they are taking this day to day, hour by hour, um, and not trying to get ahead of themselves in the response, um, trying to tackle it, um, solve the, solve the leak and now start to collect the oil as well. Um, so it, it's hard to say what that spread looks like at this time.
Samantha, is, is the, is, is the, the blob or whatever, is, is it moving south towards us generally? Is it staying static?
Um, at this point, our latest maps say it seems to be pretty static. It is, it is, it appears from the mapping um, somewhat into the Dana Point area, um, not necessarily on their beaches, but kind of moving into those waters, if you will. Um, but again, it's really, it's pretty difficult to say how it's moving, um, and where it's going.
So I, actually, we think of it as south, but it'd be more of an east. Yeah. So I.
It would have to come.
So Samantha, do they talk about that with prevailing westerlies might push it towards us?
Yes, they're, they're, they're very much, um, in sync with that. The, um, they work closely with NOAA um, and, and those agencies to monitor the tides and the winds to see where, where that will look, um, towards the future. Um, I do want to say, um, you know, fishing is closed, fisheries are closed just two miles north of our pier. Um, if that gives some gauge for the council and the public to understand, um, the fishing impact. So it's close to us, um, but not enough to impact us. Um, so that's, I think, um, good news for the most part.
And if I may add, um, we just received news that, uh, through the federal government, there will be some uh, loan assistance from an economic development standpoint for businesses that may have been impacted by this. And so when we get all that information, we'll put it together and we'll put it on our website as well. Uh, for any businesses that feel that they were, you know, they lost revenue because of this oil spill. I know it's a little bit more pronounced in Northern Orange County and Huntington Beach and Newport Beach, but to Samantha's point, it is the lobster fisher, fishery season. And one of the things that we heard today was many of those individuals who have traps out there that basically that's period of time is their income for the whole year, have to remove those traps and cannot, cannot fish there because of the ban. And so, um, it will affect not only offshore businesses, if you will, but also economic businesses as it relates to Huntington Beach and Newport that rely on that.
Samantha, do you, Samantha, do you know if they're using a biologics to, uh, to just to gobble up the oil?
Um, I don't know for sure what they're using. Um, I know that they have a very skilled team of, um, all kinds of experts and scientists handling it. Um, and they, they do have a professional, um, environmental services company contracted in to assist with the cleanup.
Alright Samantha, thank you very much for that update.
Yes.
That's all I had.
City Attorney.
Uh, yeah, Mayor and Council, uh, if I could just have a couple of minutes, uh, sometimes we have, we make procedural calls here in the meetings. They go by kind of fast and then maybe there's murmuring or maybe misunderstanding of what those were. So tonight I had two quick ones. They came up at your last meeting again tonight. I just wanted to call out to you and maybe to the public that's interested. I don't know, Kate, could you get that slide up for me? Uh, this is an excerpt from, uh, the city council's meeting policies. It mimics and tracks provisions of the Brown Act and also is based on constitutional laws that relates to access to public meetings and the podiums here. Um, it limits speakers, and I should say, this was also part and parcel of a settlement agreement in a lawsuit brought a few years against the city, uh, where the council agreed and settled that lawsuit to tighten and, and, and review these policies. Anyway, in, in regard to public comment, members of public can speak through, for three minutes. Because they have more at stake, applicants and appellantants can speak for 10 minutes on their agenda items. Uh, as happened tonight, if council desires to call, as you did, the veterans up for follow-up questioning, uh, you may do that. And, and that access can be provided to them as you are calling them as fact finders. Um, this came up at your last meeting, speakers on non-agenda items may speak for three minutes during oral communications. The public forum portion of the meeting. So what, what that means to say is if someone comes up to give, uh, testimony about an agenda item that's before you, they can speak to, to that item. Um, if they want to speak generally, um, on the topic of their choice, that has to be done during oral communications. It can't be interjected even as much as you might want to give them the convenience of speaking when they wish. By doing that, previously, the council was accused of content selection. Uh, if you give one speaker a lot of time or let them speak whenever they want, then, uh, it's difficult, actually illegal to call someone else, uh, out when their three minutes are up. The next slide shows what's supposed to happen when that occurs. Uh, the purpose of addressing the city council is to communicate formally with the council regarding matters that relate to the city business. Persons addressing the council on an agenda item shall confine their remarks to the matter under consideration by the council. Speakers may be asked, as they were at your last meeting, to clarify how their comments relate to the matter at hand. And they, uh, may address the entire council or individual council members. Uh, so as your, this excerpt from your rule suggests, if someone's going off topic or if it's difficult for the, uh, part, for the parliamentarian or members of the council to understand how their comments relate to the topic at hand, they can be interrupted, the clock stopped while they're asked to clarify if they varied, uh, from topic and why. This next item is another portion of the policy. Actually, this came up earlier tonight. Uh, the Brown Act and your policies have very. The Brown Act and your policies have very specific disclosure requirements about what's to be discussed in closed session. There are circumstances where the city attorney can conclude that the city faces a risk of litigation. When that risk is not known to potential claimants, there's no additional disclosure that needs to be made on the agenda. That disclosure must only be made where potential plaintiffs and defendants have manifested or communicated their awareness of facts and circumstances and a legal theory that connects incidents and circumstances to potential litigation. So if someone's been wronged, or if there is potential liability against someone, and I need to talk to you about that, about how to correct it, mitigate it, or settle it. If that person doesn't know about the theory that could give rise to their lawsuit, the city's not required, required to tell them in a disclosure on the agenda. You can see why, because once we tell them that we're talking about exposure that we've created, we basically have filled out the complaint for them. So tonight, as on other occasions, I'll reach a conclusion that there's exposure against the city that I need to caution you about. Have you give us direction about how to mitigate that exposure? And we don't tell with an agenda description, the potential claimants, how they can, how they can make and perfect that claim and, and sue the city for damages. So I wanted to get those out. Like I said, they go by kind of fast. They're raised in passing, but I did, I have the luxury afterwards of looking them up and researching them. I wanted to show the benefit of that with you. They're well thought through. I think they're great policies. The last thing I want to do, he won't want me to do this, except I like Carl Jones to stand. Carl's in the audience. He is a graduate of San Clemente High School, who went from there to get his undergraduate degree done at UC Berkeley, and then veered to the right and got his law degree from Chapman University. Carl joined our forces this summer. We're very pleased to have him here. He's observing on his own time tonight, just to get familiar with the layout.
Is it not easy to veer to the right at working?
No, at Chapman. He can tell it himself. He has bumper stickers on the front and the back of his car. Depending on where he is, he'll either back in or pull in straight to the park.
I love it. Congratulations and welcome. Thank you. I was wondering who he was.
I was suspicious of him the whole time.
It's like he's not.
Lose the suit.
We're glad to have Carl with us.
Thank you very much. Council.
Council member items. Thanks. Are you good Mayor Ward? Yes, me going. Thank you. So just for the city manager, it's the October 5th meeting and the first meeting in September. You had committed to me to have the uniform parking hours on this agenda. You know, you said we need to bring ordinance back. We were going to extend the hours, the parking meters at the pier bowl. You were going to have an ordinance on this agenda. Are you working on that?
Ordinance will come at the second meeting in October.
Second meeting in October now. Okay, you certainly will be, because we've lost a lot of money. This should have been implemented and I mean, at least over a hundred, at least a hundred thousand this summer for not having that done. And that was voted on like a year and a half or more ago from council. So, okay, so let me ask the city attorney too. City attorney, I know we changed the parking hours and even put up no parking signs in different parts of town since I've been on to the council, but I don't recall an ordinance coming back for first and second reading to, to implement that. Do you know why?
I'd have to research that. There are some, I, I don't know. Some of your requirements are codified and some are not. For example, park regulations, council member, those are left to council resolution so that they can change without being codified. But with regard to parking, I'll check. There might be a vehicle.
This coastal commission approved that last year. Okay, thank you. Good. I'll look forward to that. The second meeting in October. And then also, we talked at the first meeting in September about you having the list of consultants to counsel, because I had proposed that at the budget workshop when we had a preliminary list of consultants that totaled like five, five and a half, six million or something. And I had suggested that we look at that list to make, see what we can eliminate, right? And come up with some savings to apply towards the pension debt. Do you know when we'll be getting that revised list Eric?
Yeah, so Councilmember Ferguson.
We didn't see a description column of what the consultants did. And I'd hate to cut a consultant, for instance, if we don't know what they do, because it's so imperative to, you know, the city's operations.
Correct. And I'm going to ask the city clerk, I believe that when that item was deliberated, there wasn't a majority giving direction to pursue that consultant report. So I'd ask the city clerk for clarity.
Okay, well I go ahead and agendize that if city clerk, do you know for certain city clerk?
I, I think I could find it on my email.
Okay.
I had checked it and I recall that motion did, that it failed. I believe due to lack of a second, but let me see if I could find it.
All I would need is a second to agendize that list.
Is that your last item?
That is almost my last item.
Go ahead and do the item while she looks for that the next item.
I happen to be on the pier and it dawned on me that the snack shop lease hasn't come to us yet. Remember when we redid all of the concession stand leases or did RFPs or brought in house? Do you know when the, the pier snack shop will come to us? Because I know staff negotiated an increase in rent. And it would be nice to have that.
I believe, I believe that council has already deliberated on Becky Gensler's lease concessionaire agreement.
But it's not implemented yet. Like she doesn't have an active lease yet.
I, I'd have to check with staff in terms of what, I know that there was council direction given to what the lease would be. So it would be a question of just executing it. So I, I'm not prepared to answer.
Needs to be executed, because you know, we did that back in May. And I know that staff has been negotiating with them to go from 6% to 10% in terms of the revenues from the sales, I believe.
I don't believe the agreement will be coming back to council, because you've already given direction. I'll follow up with staff to find out where it's at in execution.
It's a long time, six months, if we've already given direction.
I don't believe it's on our court, but we'll double check and we'll respond to the council.
That would be great, because all these things are revenue for the city and be great to see that happen, if we could, if we could use that, obviously. So. All right, so let's see, the city clerk, were you able to find that? Otherwise, I could just.
I, I haven't found the actual motion, but as I recall, you had made a motion that you wanted the consultants listed so that perhaps some of them could be eliminated to fund the unfunded liability. And that did not pass. And then the city manager said that he would, at a meeting in, I think around October, as part of the first quarterly report, provide some suggestions on revenue enhancements or cuts to, to fund it. But that was the alternative. I'm almost certain, but I will send council an email tomorrow.
In the meantime, I'd like to agendize that. That list was to be finished by today, October 5. I'd like to make a motion, or not a motion, just request that that be placed on the next agenda. That list to take a look at, I mean, council can majority, if you choose, to not cut anything. That's one thing. But I, I have an opportunity per policy 1201-11 to make a recommendation for that list of consultants to come to the next agenda.
So Councilmember Ferguson, you will not wait until October when that item is going to be before us?
When is what item going to be?
In October. It's coming back to us in October.
I'd like to make a, make a request to agendize the consultant list at that time.
Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be for that, because you know, we have a lot going on right now. And there's more things to work on than that. And it's already coming back. And that was council direction.
Well, I made a, I made a motion for that to come on the agenda, the consultants list. We do have a $50 million unfunded pension liability. So I'd like to agendize that list so the public can see the list of all the consultants and contractors that the city has too.
So the.
Why are you overriding me?
I'm not. I'm asking the city manager a question. He's ready to speak Laura.
If we had that, should be, if we were able to run that report, we would have run the report. What we ran originally and provided, we going beyond that, we, our system capabilities to identify the descriptions of those consultants is not consistent within our financial system. And I don't want to bore you with system limitations and so forth, but we can't consistently reproduce a report that shows the description of every vendor, because it, it literally depends on the first line of the purchase order of what's put in there by the end user that gets captured in our Eden report. And so it could say invoice 1548, the other one could say landscape services, the next one could say not to exceed 25 grand. So it doesn't consistently identify the category of those consultants. But I, I stand ready for council direction.
Okay, well this didn't come up at that meeting. You said you'd have it to me by October 5.
I think I did recall voicing some concerns of the running of that report.
No, you said you'd have it. So anyway, that, regardless, we need to know what these consultants do. So if we don't know what they're, they do, then they're obviously not needed, right? So that list, maybe we need more time. Maybe staff needs more time.
If council wants to direct staff to focus their attention on this report, we stand ready.
I do have the action if you're interested.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this was, this was from the June 9th budget workshop. Motion by Councilmember Ferguson to direct staff to return to council at a future meeting with 2 million to 2.5 million in proposed budget cuts with reduction starting with consultants and contractors. Savings utilized are to be applied toward paying down the city's unfunded pension liability. The motion died for lack of a second. Following discussion, following discussion, it was agreed that city manager's son will include as part of the first quarterly financial report in September, October 2021, possible long-term methods to pay down the city's unfunded pension liability beyond the normal payments. The proposed methods are to include potential expenditure reductions as well as revenue enhancements. Council will have the opportunity during its consideration of the first quarterly financial report to provide staff direction relating to pension paydown strategies that could be integrated into the long-term financial plan.
Thank you, city clerk. I appreciate that very much. I'd still like to stand by my recommendation to place this list on either the next agenda or the one after that, if it needs, if staff needs more time. But I think consultants and contractors are, are low hanging fruit. And I think we need to start with those since, you know, we are a built out city. We have a full staff. And I think we over utilize consultants and we pay too much, millions and millions of dollars.
Laura, you should make your, your comments actually when something's agendized.
But my recommendation is made to place this consultants and contractors list on the next agenda.
Madam Mayor, last question of staff.
Yes, thank you.
Eric, the, I recall when this issue came up, it was important when you were going to get it for us. Are you saying now that you'll get that, the consultants list with what they're, what, what they're actually consulting on at the meet, at the next? When will that be available?
I want to back up. We have provided a consultant list, but it didn't describe the services. I don't have consistent reporting to provide the services for all of those consultants within my financial system.
Okay, I, I, I saw the list when it came out. It was a useless list, because it just had a name, told us absolutely nothing. Talked to you about it. I'd like to see that, whether it comes up at the next meeting or at the budget meeting. That's essential information. For example, we've got five consultants on the toll road. The toll road issues is dead. The, the year and a half ago, said they wouldn't do it. The lawsuit's been dismissed.
Let's not debate.
I'm not debating. It's an example. And, and those, for example, potentially four of those could be, could be a savings.
Okay, and that is coming back. In the first quarterly report, we will have some, something to talk about at that time, but Councilmember Ferguson's trying to agendize it right now. And it's going to come back when we get our first quarterly report. We will, can talk about that. That was the council direction.
It's our hopes to bring both the first quarter report and the pension reform direction to the council at the next meeting in October.
So I'm, I'm just, that's what I'm trying to say. We don't need to be discussing.
I just want to make sure it happens, because I, I recall the discussion four months ago. I haven't seen it. I've kind of, I've been kind of eager to see it. And I'd like to make sure it actually happens as opposed to, you know, whatever.
So let me be clear if I may. So this list is coming back or it isn't coming back? Only your recommendations are coming back, but not the consultant lists.
I go back to the city clerk's direction that was provided at that council.
Well, I'm making a new motion to agendize the consultant list.
Let me understand, will the consultants list actually have what they're consulting on?
Yeah, we need to know that.
I don't have the capabilities to, able to run a consistent report of all of the consultants.
That's something that you can talk to the city manager about. And the rest of the council knows what they were doing. And we've talked about that.
Yeah, it doesn't seem very transparent.
Mm-hmm. That's something that you can go over with, with the city manager or the accountant.
That's exactly why the list was requested, so that we would know.
It's important to note that the majority of these consultants are approved by council if they exceed 25,000. So they come across the dais for approval by the city council. If there's specific questions to specific consultants, that would make staff life much easier to obtain that information and bring it back. But looking at all of the consultants and contractors within the city, which is, I want to say, and I'm looking at Jennifer, that was over a thousand records, that it, it doesn't have consistency in the description of their services based on the financial system.
But each, you can go over every line item with the city manager at any time. We're, we're debating things that were council direction and could be three-year contracts on something, on maintenance. But you can do that at any time. We shouldn't be wasting.
Every one of us has, has a meeting with the city manager every week. And I would suggest to use that time and, and research that information with the city manager.
Well, I want the public to see.
Well.
Then you can bring it up after you do the research. And ask the questions of the city manager. I'm going to move that we, we stop this at this time. It's, we've gone way too long.
Well, okay.
I don't see her a second to it, you know.
Is the motion to have the list with the actual function of what they do?
Yeah, there's.
I can support that.
And when would you like them to work on that, when there's a thousand entries?
Whenever they can. We asked.
Okay, since June, I know. I don't agree that that's what the motion was.
Point of order, Mayor, to bring the topic back only requires two. So I understand the task, it's to take the log to track down the contracts, to look at the description in the contracts and the pricing and history of payments to them. That's not, that's going to take some effort. So I think to have that formulated and brought back, it would take three of you.
City attorney, if I may?
Yeah.
The, the list is, is done. Okay, the list is done. It has two columns. Okay, we reviewed it. The budget workshop came to us the night before. It has one column is the name of the company, the consultant, right? The second column is the cost, how much the city has paid them. But what was missing was a third column identifying what it is they do, right? So that, at some point, we need to know what all of these companies do. It, it, it seems irresponsible and not transparent to be paying these. I think that list was 5.67 million dollars. To not know what they're doing.
The point of order, council member and council mayor and council, is that, that third column to generate that is going to take staff time. And to order that to be brought back.
All right, we need to stop this right now. No, no more comment on it.
That was already.
I only see a, a motion and a second to bring it back. It takes three council members.
No, this is ridiculous. You don't want people to know.
No, that is not it. And that is so insulting. You know what? That is so insulting. Stop saying things like that. This is absolutely not true.
Not a revenue problem. And I want to fix it.
You know what? You're out of order and you need to stop talking.
Do whatever you need to do to me Kathy. You've done enough.
So there's two, there's only two. I'm not seeing a third to do this listing that you want. You can meet with the city manager anytime, and I encourage you to do that. Meet with the accountants and find out what every single contract is.
Meeting with them. How else they just do it? Do the work and bring it to us.
All right, this is, this is over. So I have a couple of comments that I would like to agendize. I would like to bring back the council member, city council policy and procedure on agendizing items for future consideration. I would like to have the council re-assert that again, what we want to do. Bring back the policy.
On bringing matters onto the agenda?
Yes. I think it's time that we review and, and talk about that. I'd like to do it before there's another mayor that has to.
Okay, I can support that.
All right. So there's, there are a third to get a staff report. Okay. So I'm hearing support for that. My other one, I heard it from the public today. I would like staff to come back or the city attorney, whoever's relevant on this, to give council an update of what SB 9 and 10 means to our city. Whether, I don't, I don't need it. I'm not asking for it by the next council meeting, just when you can do that as soon as possible. Whether, I don't, I don't need it. I'm not asking for it by the next council meeting, just when you can, uh, do that as soon as possible.
And if I could add on to that specifically, the, uh, issue with the HOAs, which I think is, uh, certainly on the top of mind of people until like it. I've heard that there was some oral direction or something that it doesn't cover HOAs, but that would be something to certainly address in discussing the nine.
Correct. The, the author of the bill indicated that the, wasn't the intent to include HOAs. However, the bill was vague on the HOAs. And so we, we believe there will be some clarity provided by the author to clarify that in the coming months.
Um, then give us an update of what you know and what you've heard. If there is going to be an update. We've all been trying to follow it, and it's so hard when it changed so many times and you know, and it is vague. I don't think we, any of us know exactly what.
Would, would the council be amenable to a special presentation on SB nine and SB, SB ten? And we could just cover it as a special presentation?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just wanted to check in with staff on that, and we heard it tonight from the floor. So that's why I'm asking. And whenever, whenever you can do it. Doesn't have to be the next council meeting. And my last comment.
That needs a second and a third.
We had it. I'm sorry, Councilmember Duncan was a second and Mayor Protan was a third. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, we did it. Okay. Um, my last comment was, this last Friday was homecoming. And we had the parade down, um, Del Mar. It was wonderful. Um, got to meet the entire football team. And then I went to the game and so did Councilmember Duncan. And they won, and it was absolutely outstanding. I think they won with, um, four seconds left.
Right.
That's the team at the ball for four seconds. We had to defend our lead for only four seconds, but it was an outstanding four seconds.
Maybe when we do the parade next year, we can maybe shorten the parade to get those cars off Del Mar so that people can have access to the parade. Those cars there really interfere with observing the parade as they come down.
It, it was different this year.
Parking, but.
Yeah, it was different this year and it, it felt different. So I think we already talked to staff about that and they're going to look at it. Yeah, thank you. Um, but anyway, what a great time and great game. But I was disappointed that you couldn't find dinner after it in town. That was unusual for a Friday night.
We had dinner, oh, after the game.
Yeah, after the game. That's when you want to go out because you. All right, so those are all my comments.
Um, can I make a couple?
Yes.
Well, one, and that's a labor, the point of the, the oil spill, um, terrible what's happened up in Huntington Beach. Before it happened, they got the, um, US Open of Surfing in and our local, uh, Graham Griffin Colapinto from the, the storied family won on the men's side. So I want to congratulate him and, and again, making San Clemente look good. Um, that was good to see. Uh, and relating to city business, I have an ask relates to the DBA where I'm the rep for the, for the Downtown Business Association. Uh, we've been working with, with Jonathan Lightfoot to develop, uh, potentially, uh, Business Improvement District. They've gotten to the point now where it's become apparent they need a, a consultant to assist them with a management plan to, to sort of move to the next phase. They've asked, uh, the city to, um, to support them by, by providing the money to hire that consultant. And I think that, uh, that the consultant would be like less than twenty-five thousand is, is all they need. So and this comes from Jonathan, but the, the motion would be to, uh, to authorize the, the city manager to um, engage a consultant, help the, uh, the DBA develop a, a bit, a management plan for a bid um, within the city manager's authority. So it doesn't need to come back to us once the city manager identifies in consultation with Jonathan, I'm sure the appropriate consultant to work with the DBA. Uh, I think it would, it would address a lot of the issues on Del Mar that have kind of keep, that have kept coming up and people sort of put on the play of the DBA, but they're not equipped to do that. But with a Business Improvement District, they probably would be. Uh, it doesn't mean it's going to happen, but the consultant will really kind of flesh out whether it works. So uh, I'd like to see if there's support for authorizing the city manager to do that.
Allow me weigh in on, I've worked with bids across the country. Bids are, bids are a great way for a small downtown business district to, to raise, you know, to, to raise funds that's outside the, the city's funds to do such things as sidewalk, you know, sidewalk repair, sidewalk cleanup. Even, you know, I've even seen bids go so far as have their own security. Yeah. Um, the Holly, the, the, the Hollywood bid, um, has, has the entire security force. They need it. We don't, we wouldn't need that. But I think bids are a great way to put a, put an, an assessment on, on a business. And those, those funds are directly benefiting those businesses in the area. So Chris, I think it's a great idea. I, I, I've spoken in the past with Chris Aiken about it. Uh, so I'll second your.
If I could just mayor council, it's on agenda, but the, the manager, if he has that authority and that mission already is already authorized to look at that within his contracting authority. I think if, if Eric finds that that's not in something he's already authorized to do, then he'd bring that back uh, with, with two of you requesting that. Is that okay, Eric?
Okay, so we'll bring it back next meeting to.
If need be, sure. If it's a mission, he's already got funded and underway, then, then he's entitled to run with it already.
Okay, all right. Uh, the final thing.
Talk about that sometime.
The final thing is, um, uh, and this is for Jonathan as well, carrying water for Jonathan Lightfoot who's out there tonight. But he wanted me to mention the job fair, uh, that's on October twelfth at the outlets. Uh, I think it's, it, it's really important that we, uh, that we get folks connected with potential jobs. And I know we have shortages in some areas, so I'm really looking for a successful, then hopefully people can get out and support that.
Is that something that staff can do? You know, your staff and then like maybe Samantha's staff, you know, kind of get that out.
We'll have a booth. Uh, well, you mean in terms of notifying?
Yes, because it's not just jobs for the outlet mall, which is what it sounds like. It's, it's all the entire.
It just happens to take place at the outlets.
Yes.
We will, we will do a press release and we'll also put it up on our website.
Yeah, that would be great if we can get something from them on that. Some art to put up.
There might be some type of event poster that we can also put on our website.
Okay, that seems to get people's attention more. And also put it on our Facebook page.
Correct on social media.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that's it.
Right.
I've got a couple of things. Uh, number one, I, I want to give Chris Duncan kudos on uh, bringing the, uh, the recommendation that we have a resolution to, to ban future offshore oil leases.
Yeah.
Chris, that was, that was a good job. I'm glad you brought it. I'm glad we're, we're on record having, having done that. Uh, some people say that the, there's technology and equipment that no longer is, is offshore oil leaks, uh, a danger, but in fact, they are. And the last week has proven that. So thank you. The other thing I'd like to look at, and I'm willing to put this off into December or even January. It's not something we need to look at immediately. But in the Orange County Library System, you have givers and you have takers. I believe that San Clemente very much puts more into the system than what it gets, gets back. And I would like to have a motion that staff looks at the possibility withdrawing from the Orange County Library System and having our own independent li- library system in San Clemente.
Glad you put that off to
Yeah.
Possibly January.
Yeah.
With everything going on.
Can you support that?
I'm not against it. I think, um, maybe that's a, that's a conversation that you should have with what you think with council before it comes back at an actual meeting.
Yeah.
But still, uh, you know.
Yeah, there's a study, too, Mayor Ward, that's already been done.
If you kind of hear consensus on that when you've talked to us.
Then there's, there's a study. Let, let's see the study.
Been a while. Um, it's been about, I think, ten years. I know I had a copy in my office. I, um, but it's probably on the website, city website, City Clerk Records.
We, we did do a study some years back as our long-term financial plan, but I sit on the Orange County Public Libraries Commission with the other city managers. Um, and the county did conduct another study as it related to the cost share. So we can bring that current study to the council for your review, um, at a later date.
Yeah.
Okay.
When you find an appropriate meeting to put it on the agenda.
In January.
That's not a problem. We'll make sure we'll bring it back.
Okay, thank you. So I think we are on number twelve.
Uh, twelve is ordinance seventeen sixteen, second reading relating to leaf blowers. And I do have one ADA. Item two, uh, to read.
Let's hear that comment.
Okay. Hey, this is from Tom Lorch, and he writes, I am opposed ordinance number seventeen sixteen as written. Although it appears that there are enough actual complaints and concerns to have some regulations for use of leaf blowers used to collect and or clear out loose vegetation and debris. I didn't see any mention of any significant complaint or issue with using particularly the gas blowers for the loose vegetation property clearance. The September seventh, twenty twenty-one Agenda Report number eight A stated the action to legislate a ban on gas leaf blowers started on February eighteenth, twenty twenty. I have not gone back to follow the gas blowing banning information per se. Although the September seventh Agenda Report does state a revised ordinance was done, and it considered public input as well. Although pretty late in the process for a number of reasons. I have the following concerns, objections and requests be considered before approving another ordinance banning our personal freedoms. One, couldn't stated operational issues be done by best practices procedures versus more laws? Two, large lots, especially residential lots, could be given a recommendation that still have the flexibility and choice of type of blower to use and not a gas blower ban. Or could we have an application process to consider allowing use of gas blowers by lot request? Three, the only possible issue I see raised with gas blowers in particular is exhaust pollution, which here in San Clemente, considering our location and existing pollution sources is, is miniscule. Summary, our personal freedoms and activities are slowly but continually being controlled and regulated by ordinance after ordinance law after law. This has to stop or be a public necessity. There are other ways to achieve peace, comfortableness and getting along, even compromise. You council members are all or probably mostly Republicans. You're supposed to be for freedom and less government. My lot is on a hill over one acre and free on one side from neighbors. Gas leaf blowers are very convenient and generally have enough cubic feet per second blow power to do great, a great job clearing my yard loose debris. There is a breeze off the ocean to the north on my property. There is no debris nor pollution off my property. What's the problem? I just recently purchased a gas blower, still in box, costs two hundred dollars. I request to put the gas blower ban on hold, get more input and suggestions. At least even though allowing one year before ban goes into full effect. And if going forward with ban, please have a final review with any accumulated input from the public, both residential and commercial before implementation. Pete. That's the end.
Thank you. I was going to ask if you put the timer on, on your comments.
I did.
Thank you. Okay, council, um, this is the second reading. Something that we've been debating for a couple of years and had public comment, uh, for many, many years. I'll actually reach out to Mr. Lorch. I'll volunteer to do that and talk to him about the process. He's coming in on it late. But, um, I'm going to recommend that we approve staff recommendation. Someone needs to read it.
I got it.
Madam Mayor, before the motion, I, I want to weigh in on that. I have given this ordinance a lot of thought. I was kind of for it. Because I thought it's a quality of life issue and, uh, they are allowed. And, uh, I was hoping we could do some kind of a rebate before we captain someone's equipment. I know there's a, there's a Home Depot rebate. But in looking at our town, you know, we really have a beautiful town. It's well manicured. When you go to other communities, San Diego and other places, and you come back, I mean, wow, this community, our neighborhood's really special. They're beautiful. And when I look at the large areas that need to be maintained by the associations and by others, I use, I use a, a electric drill, electric charger, and I, and I, I'm counting the minutes because I know that thing isn't going to last long. I have to recharge it. For the people to go through the association hills for hundreds and hundreds of yards and more and, and acres and acres, I don't know how many battery packs that have to carry or how, how long of an extension cord they have. I'm just, I'm a little troubled by it. I was kind of like the idea, but I, I, the more I think about it, the more I, I'm less encouraged by it and less support. So I, I'm not going to be able to support the ordinance.
Okay, this, this was a discussion item and the council voted to, to do the ban after a lot of discussions. So any other comments?
I just will point out that this, yeah, this was discussed even before, um, before I joined, any of us joined council. You were on the council at the time, but it was before my time, our time, yeah. But you were there and it's, you know, it's something that the residents have been asking for. This didn't come from um, council from reading all the, uh, what was it? The Parks and, was it Parks and Rec Commission? Yeah, they had some meetings on this too in the past before my time, and I read public comments. So this was something that came from the people that they wanted to see our town try. Um, and there's an excellent grand jury report that was written about, uh, gas leaf powered leaf blowers. And it talks all about, you know, how the gas powered, I'm sorry, the electric powered or battery operated ones um, are just so much healthier for us, right? Doesn't blow all the particulates, um, as much as the gas. It doesn't pollute the environment. They're about forty decibels quieter too. So there's so many, um, benefits from them. Um, and then, yeah, I, I can send, I don't know, I think we have a copy of that still somewhere. The grand jury report, if, I don't know if you want to share it with Mr. Lorch.
So I think it, you know, I used to live on an acre in the mountains and we had to use extension cords because you can rely on the battery. So it, it's doable with extension cords. We used to take care of half an acre, just that didn't have the house on it. We could do it, but it does require that until, uh, I don't know if there'll ever be battery power to do that. But anyway, um, it, it can be done and, and it was already debated. So uh, I brought up trying to leave out city lots and things like that, but the council didn't choose to do so. So it'll be probably extension cords, which can be rather long and they work quite well. But anyway, um, Councilperson, would you like to read the ordinance? Because we do have to read it.
Okay, sure. Be happy to. Let's see, um, a motion to adopt the staff recommendation.
Second reading.
Second reading, thank you. Leaf blowers. Adopt ordinance number seventeen sixteen entitled an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Clemente, California, making sequa findings and amending title eight of the city of San Clemente Municipal Code to establish a leaf blower ordinance that bans use of gasoline-powered leaf blowers and add standards for the use of electric-powered or battery-powered leaf blowers.
Cal, second that. Oh, we don't need to.
Yeah, I guess you don't.
Do we need to do that? It's a second vote? Oh, still, okay. We haven't done this for a while.
Yep, okay. Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock. Mayor Protan James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Carries four one.
Okay, I'm going to move that, uh, we adjourn to the next regular city council meeting to be scheduled to take place on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Close session items will be considered at five P M. And the regular business meeting will commence at six o'clock P M. Meeting will take place in the Community Center Auditorium located at one hundred North Calliasville, San Clemente.
Second.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock.
Aye.
Mayor Protan James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Carries five oh.
Right. Good night.